Like to reconvene to open session. Report from closed session. In five matters of anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to general counsel in the matter of F Darlene M. Anya versus SFUSD SF. Superior Court case number CGC twenty five eight seven six one four, the board by a vote of six eyes, one absent gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. Opening items, our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tush Aloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tush community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Now I'd like to move to the approval of board minutes, regular meeting of October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Okay. Is that?
Are these October twenty fifth or that?
I'm sorry.
November fifteenth, okay.
Thank you, November fifteenth, my, as soon as I said it, I realized that was November fifteenth. So for the motion, we have a, um, it's been moving seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Kanashka?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez? Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Great.
It's exciting, I'm sorry.
Thank you, um, I do want to know, I will be moving action item Agenda J, um, to follow public comment. Just please note that. And I will now turn it to Dr. Wayne for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Lamb, good evening, everyone. I want to start off, uh, talking about an important topic, the, the slide says school health and safety, but it's also about, um, build, rebuilding and maintaining trust with our community. And so we know, uh, appreciate we've, we've been talking a lot in our last, uh, board meeting. We had a long discussion about our goals for student learning. But a foundation is that our students need to be in, uh, safe learning environments and need to be healthy. And, um, and we have been working hard to make sure that that has happened. And I know over the years, the board has looked and addressed and seen where there's issues that need to be addressed. For example, at Buena Vista Horace Mann, I know the community advocated, um, uh, to, for recognizing it had needs in its facilities and the board responded, um, with being able to, uh, authorizing, moving forward with, uh, modernization. And to do that, it's meant we've, um, needed to do work to assess the site. And in that process, we have identified areas where there may be safety issues. And, um, and that is incredibly concerning when we see that, when we have students at a, at a school. Uh, because even though what prompts it is our efforts to want to address student safety, um, we have students who are there, uh, in the here and now that we know we need to take whatever action is necessary to ensure that they're safe. And so, uh, I had a chance to talk with the Buena Vista Horace Mann community and hear their concerns. And here, the concerns in the moment, but also the concerns with what, um, uh, with how we have addressed these issues in the past. And so I shared with them that what they should expect and the standard that I hold myself and our leadership team to, and that the Board of Education is holding me to, is being transparent, um, accountable for following up, being visible and responsive. And, um, so we've been working to do that in, uh, in addressing these issues. And so, um, we're at Buena Vista Horace Mann, we were doing soil testing where we found some lead in the soil. And so we've been, uh, responding by fencing off the area, uh, providing bottled water, collaborating with the health department and implementing additional testing. Uh, um, and that additional testing has demonstrated, we may need to take additional actions, uh, as well. And so tonight we're bringing forward, and you see later, an emergency contract for remediation, so we can move as quickly as possible. And so I do want to recognize that when we're sharing information, um, when you're a parent, and I'm a parent, you know, and you hear that there may be a safety issue at your school, all you want to hear is that it's going to be fixed. And so we are doing our best to fix it and we're committed again to that transparent communication about our pro- our progress in doing so. Um, but I just want to acknowledge how difficult these situations are, but share what you can, uh, and should expect from us as we're working to, uh, address them. Let's see here. It didn't move the first time. I don't know, can you go to the next slide? So, uh, recently, um, last week, uh, we celebrated, uh, Inclusive Schools Week. And this is such an important, um, um, time to celebrate practices that are happening all year. When I introduced myself to the community, I shared I was a middle school language arts teacher, uh, at one of the first schools in New York that had an inclusion program. So I had, um, special education students in, in my classroom and know how important it is to provide all students with the opportunities to be with their peers and be included in as many activities as possible. So, uh, each year in San Francisco, we have an annual event that celebrates the progress schools have made in providing an inclusive education for our diverse student population. And our students marginalized due to disability, gender, and also socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. And this, uh, year, schools incorporate inclusivity lessons and activities. There were district-wide events featuring participants, participants of a nineteen seventy seven sit-in advocating for disability rights and Special Olympic ath- athletes. So I'm proud we, we use this week to celebrate our efforts towards inclusiveness and recognize it needs to be something that happens, um, all, uh, all year. So, um, if you go to the next slide, I know there's been a lot of buzz around football in the area. Um, and you know, with the promise of championships, but I'm not talking about the forty Niners. We delivered on a promise for championship because our own, um, Lincoln High School had won the seven A championship. It's their third state championship, so let's give them a big round of applause. Yeah, so they defeated the Crenshaw Cougars fifty-four to six at Kesar Stadium. Did you say, is that your, uh?
I think Go Mustang.
Oh, Go Mustang, yes, uh, uh, and, um, at the Kesar Stadium on Saturday, December tenth, um, we're really proud of their athletic accomplishments, but also how they work together as a team, uh, to reach this level of success, so congratulations to them. And then just want to end, we're in the, um, you know, holiday season and we know there's a lot of school, school activities, but I was very appreciative since, um, you know, we're at the district office, Commodore Slope, their choir came down to share some of the holiday cheer and some of their talents as singers, um, with us here at the district office. And so want to share a brief, uh, excerpt of their performance. Um, it was great to see them and I, I asked them what they liked about the choir and, uh, the main answer was the hot chocolate and cookies. Uh, but then I asked them what they learned being in choir and they really spoke to being able to learn how to read music, what, how to work with the conductor. And so appreciate, um, the choir teacher from Commodore Slope, uh, for leading the group and just wanted to bring a little holiday cheer, uh, to our, our board meetings since they were able to bring it down to the district office. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne, um, like to now have our student delegates, uh, Hanson and Kanista, uh, give their student delegates' report.
Thank you, President Lamb. We want to congratulate all of our seniors who submitted their applications for the University of California and the California State Universities.
We know that a lot of seniors may have more applications due by the new year, um, but we still hope you're all able to have a westful, restful winter break. And we also wish everyone good luck with their finals and congratulate everyone on making it through the fall semester. Thank you.
Thank you, um, like to now go to the Papral State of Emergency update, Dr. Wayne.
Uh, thank you, since declaring the state of emergency, I, I committed to providing a, an update at every regular Board of Education meeting. Um, I wanted to provide, uh, just first an overview of what has happened since declaring the state of emergency and then highlight progress in a few, uh, key areas, um, as well as share where there's, there are still concerns. And so, um, if you go to the next slide, um, you know, so a lot has happened since declaring the state of emergency. Um, of the, you can see the list here, I want to highlight, uh, first, just the work our case managers are doing. We reassigned staff from the, uh, from different departments, recognizing we're in a state of emergency and this is a priority. Uh, they've received training and they're really helping us accelerate, uh, responding to issues and closing. And so we've been able to close over two thousand tickets over the past, uh, thirty days. And then, uh, also we committed to providing ongoing communication. And so we're doing weekly updates with our staff and we have our, uh, Empower SF website that includes a public-facing dashboard, so you can see metrics of how we're doing in resolving tickets as well as in addressing the number of impacted employees. And there's a lo- a lot of work to be done, um, to stabilize the system. And so we're mapping out what the next nine, ninety days look like. I did want to speak to two issues of particular importance, if, uh, let me see, let me see, oh, there we go. Um, and, uh, so one is related to health benefits. Every employee needs to have access to their health benefits. And we had heard that people were not able to access their health benefits. And we worked with the, um, we don't administer our health benefits. The city's health, uh, service system is the one that administers it. And so when we learned that people were not getting their health benefits, we, um, um, collaborated with them and met with them to identify the issue and then address the interface issue, interface issues that led to that. However, it has meant there are still people who may not have had, may not have access to their health benefits. And so we've been meeting with their executive director and team to determine, uh, who those people are and how to restore the benefits right away. And really appreciate their recognizing that we're in a state of emergency. Uh, we started to hear that trying to reach them was challenging and so they created a dedicated phone line, uh, for SFUSD employees. So we have the number on the screen, it's six two eight six five two four seven zero zero. And the director herself has been, uh, very supportive, said, when you receive an email of somebody who doesn't have their benefits, please forward it to us so we can, uh, investigate it right away. So they understand our top priority is to re- uh, restore benefits immediately. Um, so that's one issue. Another first, issue that had been incredibly frustrating for our staff is, um, their ability to contribute to their retirement. That was actually an issue with our, um, with the software provider. Uh, you may have heard me say that SAP, our provider, um, we got escalated to their go- global escalation team. So they actually have people on site and working with our staff were able, um, to resolve the systems issue. But similar to the, the health services issue, we now have resolved the issue moving forward, but we know people were negatively impacted. So we had a clinic, um, to provide additional four or three B support and we're, uh, still allowing employees to contribute, uh, if they want to contribute anything additional before December. Um, then lastly, in, in the spirit of transparency, when I talk about we're making progress, but there are still challenges, that I do want to share, we are working on our end-of-year, uh, preparation. And this is incredibly important that we're, um, you know, uh, get, um, making sure the system has accurate information. Uh, so like validating pay and benefits contributions and implementing and testing the systems so that when we mail out the tax information people need, the W twos, that it, it is accurate. And so that one, we're going to need to, uh, we're, we actually have a day-to-day plan for how to close the year out. Uh, but we're still going to need to be proactive in communicating what to expect from that and then what to do if you do, if employees see any issues. Uh, so these are definitely, uh, uh, these are three issues that are on top of mind for our employees and so wanted to provide an update. Um, and then you can look on the website, uh, in our dashboard for seeing, uh, to see how we're doing with our overall progress. And I actually will conclude with, sorry, one last, uh, to conclude, oh, now it's not going again. Can you go to the next slide? Oh, there we go. Now, uh, so I do want to say, as we get to the end of, uh, before winter break, we've, we moved up the time for our time sheets, we don't want anybody submitting time sheets after they go on break. So just a reminder, the time sheets are due on December sixteenth. And if people need support for, uh, understanding their pay stub, uh, we have a portal for that. Uh, I did get to sit and talk with employees, um, and some staff about their pay stubs and it was both helpful, I think, for them because was able to illustrate some, and show them where they could find some information they were asking for. And then also helpful for me to talk to the team about how we can, um, uh, strengthen our communication around, here's how the pay stubs are working. So, and this is one resource, we have others available and we'll continue communicating on this topic. So that now concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Um, and now I'd like to go to advisory committee reports and appointments. Um, we are going to have the Board of Education appointment to Elections Commission. Dr. Wayne?
Um, thank you. So the, um, Elections Commission is actually a city's commi- city commission that the Board of Education has a seat to which they can appoint a member. And so in, uh, in the past, the board has appointed, um, uh, commissioners to this commission. And it's, uh, we kind of looked into what the process had been and, and it was really just a board member could share who they thought was going to, um, uh, might do well serving on this commission. And so for this time, um, the, uh, appreciate the board leadership gave the whole board an opportunity to, um, um, reach out to their networks and, and consider who might be, uh, um, sir, uh, a good candidate to be a commissioner. We also did make the application available on our website, um, for anybody that's interested. But really, this is a, a board nomination to a committee that's a city commission, so it's not one that's going to impact, uh, district operations. And so, um, with that, uh, I believe we received an applicant that is being brought forward for, um, uh, approval to be on the Elections Commission.
So, um, per your agenda, we, board leadership reviewed the application recommending the board appoint Michelle Parker to the commission, so I wanted to see if there's a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you so much, their public comment.
No in-person public comment. Uh, for our virtual participants, please raise your hand if you would like to share your public comment on the, um, on this item. Seeing two hands raised. So seeing one hand raised. Sarah?
Hi, um, so I'm a substitute teacher at SFUSD and due to Empower SF.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Sarah, right now, we are, um, we are on the Elections Commission item.
We do need to take our public comment on, no, I'm sorry, um, we didn't, are we taking public comment on?
I will go back, sorry.
Okay. Okay, you will have, um, one minute, go ahead, please.
Hi.
Sorry.
Yes, it's a, go ahead.
I reached.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. It was my error, I did not call for public comment after Dr. Wayne's presentation. So what we will do is we will finish, um, this item of the agenda. We'll go through the advisory report, then I will go back and reopen public comment for the Empower update. My sincere apologies for that, uh, oversight.
I will have to wait a while, huh?
Yes, please, thank you. Seeing no public comment for this item.
Thank you. And fully Vice President Bogus, did you have a comment?
Did, um, so I think I would just want to first appreciate President Lamb, um, and district staff for kind of their work for pulling this process together. Even though I did review the application and was in support of recommending moving this candidate forward, uh, I woke up this morning with hesitations, um, around the process and really, um, even though I did agree to this process, support this process and approve a candidate through this process, um, I think I just woke up with a change of heart, seeing kind of what's been happening with the Election Commission and the decisions that are being made on that commission in regards to its leadership and really feeling like it might be more helpful for us to have a, a, a broader process that really incorporates a little bit more of our school community into the decision of who we appoint for this. Um, so I'm just indicating that I, I will not be supporting the recommendation coming from, um, board leadership, uh, but also I think want to indicate that it's not a reflection on the qualifications of the candidate, um, or they're fit to kind of serve in this role, uh, really related to, to my feelings, uh, about us potentially having a different process to do this as we, we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hanson?
Can I get some clarity on that? I'm confused about what's going on because I thought board leadership was recommending this candidate, so I just want to, I'm confused. Are we, are you all suggesting a different process or is Vice President Bogus, are you suggesting a different process?
So I am not suggesting a different process, but I am voting no on this recommendation, even though I am one of the people who made the recommendation and that is why it is confusing. Uh, and, and yeah, I, yeah, no, let me clarify and I think some of it is, I, I just really, as I woke up this morning, just kind of had a, a change of heart as far as the process, but not the candidate. So I just wanted to, to separate those two and explain, uh, my vote and my positioning.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Kanista?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes, earth, five eyes, one name.
Thank you, I will go back to, um, recognizing I don't want to make our educators and staff members wait longer, so I am going to reopen public comment for Empower since that was my oversight, not opening it up. Um, so at this time, uh, for public comment on the Empower update.
No, so we have no in-person, uh, please raise your hand if you care to speak to the Empower SF update item. Each speaker will have one minute, um, and I will call speakers in groups of three. Sarah?
I hope this is the right time to share this. Um, I'm losing my health insurance because Empower SF and the mistake, I've reached out and I've gotten no response. I've reached out to the board supervisors. And it, it had to do with last year, losing my CTA dues, the district not paying them. Um, so, I mean, it's a hardship for us, my husband wants to pay five hundred a month. Um, health insurance and we don't have money. I'm like working basically almost full-time for the district now. Nobody's reached out back to me regarding this and I'm like heartbroken. I've worked since two thousand and one for the district and I've had health insurance for like, like a decade or more, fifteen years.
Thank you.
Can we get her contact information? Alicia, can you give her your contact, please?
Yes, Sarah, are you still there?
Yes, I'm there, I'm still here.
I'm, I'm going to give you my email address, um, and then can you send me your contact information, please? And, and we'll get you connected with folks, with a superintendent who can support, with folks who can support.
Okay, what is your contact?
Sure, it's, uh, B like boy, A like apple, R like red, I like indigo, L, L like lion, lion, A like apple, S like Sam, A like apple, at SFUSD.edu.
Tell me your first name and your last name.
First name is Alicia, last name is Burias.
B R I L L A S?
B A R I L L A S.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, because, because I've reached out and nobody replies, they go, yes, let's give you my contact number and then I did get no response.
And then I'll say, and if, if, uh, usually when people are making public comment here, we're able to talk to them because we do want to follow up. So maybe if the pub, if the person making public comments needs follow-up, if you could also just say your full name, we could probably find you, uh, particularly if, if you've emailed, we could find, uh, um, the name. So we still.
My name's, my name's Sarah, Sarah Amunoff and, um, basically, um, the CTA dues weren't paid and I had, um, disability accommodation during the pandemic.
Yeah, we, we, sorry to interrupt, so that, that's just helpful, we'll, we'll be able to follow up then.
Thank you very, very much, thank you so much.
Thank you. Shelley, Sarah, and Virginia Marshall. So Shelley, Sarah, Virginia Marshall. Shelley, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I'm going to speak very quickly. Good evening Superintendent Wayne, President Lamb, members of the board. Briefly, I am Shelley Weiner, Secretary of the SFUSD Chapter of SEIU and in SFUSD fourteen twenty-six, Senior Clerk Typist at Alamo Elementary. I'm calling in today while suffering from severe vertigo to advise you that the situation with the Command Center, DOT, HR, benefits, and labor is intolerable to not just me, not just.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but when you are reading a written comment, you can't actually go that fast for your interpreters, thank you so much.
Absolutely correct, okay. To advise you that the situation with the Command Center, DOT, Human Resources, Benefits, and Labor is intolerable to not just me, not just SEIU, but to all union-represented employees of the SFUSD. Both hard copies and digital copies of all the trouble tickets, the emails which they generated, my responses and the unacceptable responses which I received regarding the disposition of most all of the tickets which I had placed, and not on my behalf, but on behalf of all the unions, will be sent to the superintendent and all board members at the conclusion of this meeting for your reference. The rush to close tickets without actually solving the issue is appalling. We are given but four days to respond to an email about a trouble ticket. Otherwise, the ticket is closed out and the maker will have to submit a new ticket and start over. I'm going to speak about just one issue. Since April, I have asked that Empower SF.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, that is your time, thank you. Sarah?
Hi, my name is Sarah Maskin, I am a.
Hi, my name is Sarah Maskin. I am a fellow public school teacher. I teach in a, um, a neighboring district and I have called many times to express my concern and outrage honestly over the empower fiasco. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, while I appreciate the board and the district's, um, attention to this and I appreciate kind of the overview of the information and what, what you are trying to do. Frankly, to the casual observer, like this is just a litany of jargon. And as a teacher and as a parent of SFUSD students, I, I think that at this point, people just want to know how this is going to be fixed. Um, this has been, this has lasted so long and it just, it's going to feel ridiculous at this point. In addition, when I'm hearing all of these stories of teachers who are suffering and are not getting paid properly and are having their benefits messed around with. I, I appreciate, you know, the, uh, I appreciate people trying to reach out, but I'm wondering what is happening to all of the people who don't have time to get on to this meeting and to ask for help. And I'm wondering how we can all these people. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you so much, sister. Uh, to President Lamb, Vice President Bogus, Superintendent Wayne, Board Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. It has been almost a year since we, the public, have heard about this disaster with, uh, with the payroll. It has not gotten any better. I don't know what you all need to do, but you need to do something. Every week, a board meeting will be here and here and here and here. Nothing is solved. And thank you, President Lamb. I was about to say, let's send her a text message or an email or something. Whenever an educator comes to you all for help, stop the meeting and let them go as you just did. Whenever a student comes down for help, stop and let them go. Without the students, we have no, you have no job. Without the educates, we have no job. So please fix it. We're getting ready to go into the holiday season. Still have folks who have not been paid. That's, that's unacceptable. It will be a year out in January or February since I started making these comments. And I'm just doing comments, but what if this was me not being paid as an educator? Unacceptable. So please do something. Do not go on your own, uh, Christmas or winter break until you all get everybody paid. It is, they can be paid and you wasted $13 million. Thank you.
Ms. Marshall, thank you. Okay, next group is Ms. B and Ms. Chris Claus. Ms. B, go ahead, please.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, I was, uh, I just wanted to, um, amplify what, uh, one of the previous callers called in. I, for the last four months, I've just been hearing people tell their stories and we treat them as though they are individual issues. If you have time somehow to sit in these meetings and tell your story, you will get support and perhaps they will, somebody will address your issue. You shouldn't have to come to a board of ed meeting to have a desk in the hallway that will help you. You shouldn't have to call in to tell your story publicly to have, uh, help come to you. This is not an individual problem. It's a systemic problem. It continues. I just got two tickets that were quote resolved from August and July. I don't know how they were resolved. There is no information on there. Apparently they're closed tickets. And I'm, I'm not even sure which of the many tickets I have opened, they refer to. And when people then say, please give us your name so we can help you, that's just pitting people against each other. We all need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Claus?
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a special education teacher at Washington High School. Um, I'm calling in because I have two help tickets that I received emails about saying, oh, your request has been updated. And normally when that happens, I get information in that email or I can look at the ticket in the system and see what the update has been. And on both of those, all of the update has said is your ticket had, or your request has been updated. And I've replied to both asking what the update is and I have received no response. So I still don't know what's going on. Um, I have not bothered to call the call center because I have had multiple colleagues as a building rep at my site come in and one come in while, you know, I had students working independently and they wanted to check in with me because they were on hold with the call center and it hung up on them with, uh, after less than a minute on hold multiple times. And then I'm hearing stories about other people who are on hold for hours or who don't get a response or who don't get answers by calling. So it's not something that I've felt like devoting a lot of time to. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say is, um, for everyone who has called in to support the employees of SFUSD and the educators with this, thank you. Please remember that it is not just your educators. It is everyone.
Sorry to interrupt you, but that is your time. Thank you. Next group, it will be Charles, Michael and Malia. Again, that's Charles, Michael and Malia. Charles, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm curious if an audit will ever be conducted, um, from an outside group to see what happened and what went wrong within power. Why was this contract chosen? Why was the contract written the way it was? Why wasn't the system run parallel to the old system to make sure it worked? Why wasn't it pulled back when it failed miserably? Please consider hiring an outside auditor to revert, review the terms of this contract and what went wrong so that other public agencies and other school systems never have to suffer this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, hello. I'm going to continue Shelley Weiner's comment. Since April, I have asked that empower SF be fixed to reflect some of the requirements of the two unions of SFUSD MOUs approved by the B, Board of Ed in February 21 and January 22, which confirm that the district will provide five days additional sick leave for reaction to COVID vaccination and 10 additional sick days leave for actually coming down with COVID-19 or caring for a sick child with COVID, et cetera, for a total of 15 days. Empower SF has only ever shown the 10 days for COVID-19 illness. Employees have used sick time, vacation time, personal time, or gone without pay because the five days were missing. Who is going to audit all these errors to make employees whole? When I was contacted about this issue, I was told that the 10 sick days were all that were given. This is a direct contradiction to the MOUs. When I wanted to point out to the command center folks to read the MOUs, I noticed that they had all been taken down from the website. So they had no point of reference. Not acceptable.
Thank you. Malia?
Hi, my name is Malia Marancheck. I'm a senior at the Ruth Asawa School for the Arts. I just wanted to express my support for the Native American related programming that we've been able to receive at our school. I've been able to participate in some of the summits and in the Native.
That is the next item.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Malia. That does conclude our virtual public comment.
Okay, so she can speak after, when we get back to the, and now that we're going to the advisory committee updates.
That concludes public comment for the empower, uh, payroll state of emergency update. Like to go back to Agenda F and now like to, um, have the migrant education program parent advisory report. Like to call on Helen Pettiford, please, Office and Access and Equity.
Really come over here.
Good evening. Thank you, um, everyone for being here. We're going to be projecting in Spanish. It looks like the English version is up. Um, and we brought some translations. We also loaded them to board docs in English. So, um, right now I'll just go ahead and introduce our panel. This is Blanca Gonzalez here.
Hi, my name is Blanca Gonzalez. I work in San Francisco Unified School District, right? Uh, for migrant education program.
Oh, I work in, uh, migrant education program at San Francisco Unified School District. My name is Blanca Gonzalez.
Thank you.
My name is Gina Padilla. I am a community organizer, student advisor also for the migrant education program and we're here to support that. Our mom leader, president. Thank you.
And basically the program of migration migrant. And the mission and the purpose of the program migrant is promotion and divulgation, salud and bienestar, apoyo y enriquecimiento académico al año escolar, classes de verano, taller de desarrollo familiar y apoyo a la transición de los estudiantes de secundaria y educación prosecundaria y empleo. Desarrollo profesional para, para el programa de educación migrante. And basically the eligibility of the program of education migrant is for children and youngsters of 3 to 22 years that have not graduated from the secondary school. The child or parent or tutor is a worker, that is an agricultural migrant in the industry of the fishery in the, in the United States or in the field. The child and the family or that has moved in 36 months to obtain a temporary employment or harvest in agriculture and fishing. The child has moved from a district to another school. Basically, that's, that's the requirement for qualifying for the program migrant. Preparation for the school, classes for parents, services of kindergarten to eighth grade, intervention academic during the summer school, following progress and academic and support for mental health. Services of nine, from ninth to 12th grade and there is assessment and following academic progress. Excursions, educational development, training, classes for university, university professional and financial opportunities. Management of cases according to necessary, the support for mental health. Services for teenagers outside of the school of 14 to 22 years. Management of cases, links to teenagers with community and educational agencies, support for mental health. Services for students and families of the program migrant, the social services, physical and mental health. Collaboration with other resources of the community of health to link to the families of the program migrant. Services of participation and support for parents, development of capacity and leadership, ability of academic support for the parents. Committee of parents, that I also belong to. And basically, um, no other parents are there because in reality, they have children, little ones and they don't have where to leave them, pay, not pay them for, for, uh, that they be cared for. Then basically, I'm representing their parents. Because that's the reason why they want to be here, but basically they can't. And then identification of the students through activities of extension based on the school and the community and subscription in academic services and socials appropriate. Support of education, of program migrant post COVID-19. Increase the support to the migrant families, increase the level of reference of mental health, reference of food supply, emergency services, nutrition of the district school of San Francisco, program of assistance for accommodation, guide of accommodation, connection of Catholic qualities, medical, power, lack, race and technological support. Support one-on-one for all migrant families, support of the direct line of the district school, links to families, distribution of schools' utilities, support of subscription, applications for pre-kinders to 12th grade. The highlights of the program migrant and as you can see, uh, there are students of fourth to fifth grade of the summer school that are very, very beneficial for our children because they, in the materials that are a little bit late, they put up the level that they should be. So basically, it's a very good program. Basically, the successes are the continuous support for the students that receive academic intervention in the summer school and mentorship. Preparation for the secondary students of the program that is SAC, ACT and FAXA, Act of the Dreamers, university applications and declarations personally. The 92% graduation rate of 2021, complete with personal, senior, assistant, proactive parents of the program migrant, all students of pre, of pre-kinders attend the programs such as estar, district school, private, collaboration and continuous support of the access and equality program of summer in 2022. 12 students and 12 students had an interned paid, working, assisting the professors in the classrooms. That program was very good. We didn't have it, but this year it was, it was very beneficial for our young people. Program migrant institute of education and the students attended the federal university of Fresno, California and received a stipend monetary. And that is also very beneficial because those, 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 those motivate them to continue studying and to see what is beneficial is to go to university. Challenges, challenges and priorities. Lack of interpretation of language, humility, cultural empathy in schools. Lack of housing, poverty, problems of immigration, access to, to education for parents. The students are in various school sites, difficult to obtain access to services, challenges post COVID-19. Increase of vacancies, total loss of employment of the program migrant, increase of of deportation threats, total loss of financial stability, incapacity to obtain help from the government and greater social and emotional anxiety. Discrimination of 14% of federal funds and priorities, guarantee of financing to maintain the level of support and to recruit students and families of the program of education migrant. And priorities, financial support to maintain the level of support and to recruit students and families of the program of migrant education. Development of English language for parents with care for children, continuous financing to continue with families' therapy, to address the topics of traumas, crises, separation of families, and the challenges of immigration. And those classes that are given for, uh, for parents are very beneficial because, uh, uh, it's a, uh, a, uh, like a program of, uh, seven classes, seven classes that are given for parents, so that one can go, uh, uh, educate and learn how to deal with the problems that our young people have. And, uh, the last page says, "Maybe they don't know their names, but they feed our families," which is what you're seeing in, uh, in the video, right? That we don't know their names, but they bring us our food, our food, to your food, to ours. And, uh, basically, they're people who work very hard, day-to-day, and, uh, and the agricultural workers grow, harvest, the food that we eat every day, don't deserve to be unnecessary, support our workers for a stronger protection against pesticides, which is something very terrible, right? Our families get sick, some die, uh, poisoned by the toxins that they put on the, uh, the plants, uh, and, uh, we want your support, uh, of you, who can support in that, uh, that, uh, uh, don't give too much pesticides to, uh, to our plants. Help our students, too. And, uh, thank you. That's all I can offer, and, uh, we hope all of you's support.
Any questions, any?
If you have any.
Anything that we can?
Thank you so much. If there's public comment, then I'll open it up for any questions from commissioners. To in-person public comment.
Thank you. So I will call speakers up in groups of four. Uh, the first speaker is Paloma Flores, Mary Jean Robertson, Poppy Gallegos, and Roden Hartzoff. That's for the next presentation. Sorry, that's for our next presentation. I will check our, uh, please raise your hand if you care to speak to the migrant ed presentation. Each speaker will have one minute, and I will call speakers up. Um, just see, okay, each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Good night. Please lift your hands if you have any public comments related to the presentation we've seen. Thank you.
Hello, if you want to talk about the, uh, the report, you can make a public statement. Now you can say that everyone has a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one hand raised. Uh, Ms. Marshall, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I want to congratulate my former supervisor Helen Pettifor and my old colleagues in Department A and E, and especially migrant education colleagues. Thank you for all that you do. Going that extra step to reach our students who, uh, who are, who need the help the most. There are language bearers, housing bearers, job bearers for their parents, but you go out and you beat the bushes to find these students, to get them, uh, enrolled in our, uh, in that program, and it's a great program. I always tell our students that when you bite into the apple from your cafeteria, from your home, it just gets to say, well, look, if someone had to pick that apple, and many times, these are migrant education students who should be in the classroom. So thank you for your great work. Ashay, please continue.
Thank you, Virginia.
You're welcome. Gina.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. That does conclude virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Rice and Warley, Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you for coming to this presentation. I'm going to ask a question in Spanish and then in English. Uh, well, I have two questions. The first is, how many students are participating in these programs?
Uh, unfortunately, this is a federal program that has many regulations now. We started the year with one hundred and forty-four students. Right now, we are up to two hundred and fourteen. It's very difficult to find students, uh, in the school district. It's like finding a needle in a haystack. Uh, it's extremely hard to go to the schools and parents tell us, oh, we're migrants, we're farm workers. Uh, we do a lot of the work with the help of the parent liaison, some of the principals, uh, people who know us. Blanca and I have been doing this work for about twenty years. So we have a lot of contacts and friendships at different schools. But the district has changed so much. We are, we're now the old ladies who come to all these new, young people who don't know us anymore. So we're trying to rebuild contacts. But it's very difficult to find our students, and they only get eligibility for three years. And every three years, we have, they have to either go again and work, work in the fields, or they lose their eligibility. So we're constantly losing students and trying to find others to help. Students and trying to find others to help. So we're trying to rebuild contacts. But it's very difficult to find our students, and they only get eligibility for three years. And every three years, we have, they have to either go again and work, work in the fields, or they lose their eligibility. So we're constantly losing students and trying to find others to help. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I answered the other question that was about, uh, uh, how are they, how the people are aware that they can qualify for that program? And the folders we gave you, there's a sheet of papers that we have, that we, that's supposed to be turned in at EPC to every family that comes to the district. And then they send these forms back to us, and if there's even the slightest hint that they've done some kind of work, Blanca calls them and she goes through all the questionnaire and, and that's how we find families is through that little piece of paper. And then, um, we actually made eight thousand copies this year. In the beginning of the school year, we went to every school, and we took them to the parent liaison so they could send them in the Wednesday folders to the families to see if they returned them. So, um, we just try every trick that we have on our sleeves to try to find families.
We also have it on the website, although that's not really a place that a lot of our families have access to or go to look at it. Um, it is available there in English and Spanish.
Rachel Alexander.
Yeah, my question is similar to my companion's, uh, but I also want to know if the federal regulations limit the services, uh, or is it possible to provide services to other students or only to the students that qualify? Because a lot of these services, I imagine, would be very useful for different students. And I also think it's important to focus on this type of program or integrate it to the efforts of schools in terms of mathematics and reading and all that, no? Uh, and then, uh, how am I thinking about this type of integration? So I was asking, kind of, about, like, the integrating the program with our, both our academic goals, like the goals that we've set as a board, but also the, the needs of other students, because all these services are really, really useful for other students. I was also asking if the federal rules only limit them to be able to provide services to these students, and if they're thinking, how they think about integrating.
Yeah. Okay. Unfortunately, the federal regulations don't just serve with eligibility to the children who qualify. And it's very sad because I'm finding out that many new children are still coming. Uh, we can't directly serve them. We do help them. We never leave anyone without anything. But it does make it sad that we can't do more academically. Which would be very good, if schools had more one-on-one. But, uh, it's, uh, that's how it is. Every child represents a federal fund, and it's to the children we have to serve, to the families. Yeah, we can only, we can only serve, uh, those families that do qualify to the, uh, through the migrant education program with the federal funds. Uh, right now, we're finding a lot of newcomers, a lot, a lot. We, we work at Mission High School, and they send them all to the migrant ed office. So we don't say no. We, we help them as much as we can, refer them to programs, but we cannot work with them one-on-one. But we do have quite a few that come to us, and they know we're there for them. So, um, yeah, you should come to the office. It's kind of like a, a house. It's, it's their home. It's, uh, so I'm the grandma. Blanca is the auntie, and Brenda, who's on maternity leave, is like the big sister who tells them, I just graduated from college. You are all gonna graduate from college. So they have, you know, we have grandma, auntie, and the big sister. And then Helen, who's just the best supervisor we could.
Oh, sorry to cut you off, Gina. I just wanted to add that our services, because it is a federal grant, are supplementary services. So we can't cut into the core of the regular school day, what the district offers. So that's why we do after-school, summer school, breaks, things like that, other kinds of services, too, that we can help, um, their experience overall. Thank you.
Thank you again so much for your report and your work, um, and really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next, we have the Indian Education Parent Advisory Council, Title VII. I'd like to also call upon Helen Pettifor again.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Audrey Almaguer. I'm the program manager of the Indian Education Program, and we are incredibly excited to be speaking with you all today. Slide. Thank you. Our beautiful program was established in nineteen seventy-one as a Title VI program that supports the educational and cultural needs of the American Indian, Alaskan Native community. We offer academic support and advocacy, tutoring, cultural workshops such as, uh, beating and drum making, uh, as well as our high school internship program. Uh, none of which would be possible without the tremendous support of our community partners, uh, which include the American Indian Cultural Center, the Friendship Health Youth Program, the Native American Health Center, and the American Indian Cultural District, and most importantly, our, uh, parent advisory committee.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Miller, and I am the chairperson for the Indian Education, uh, Parent Advisory Committee. And, um, who the one is? Yeah, so to my left is Shama. She is our secretary, and, uh, we have a student representative that's, um, Miley Dean, and we also have a parent representative that is also with us today. Her name is Brittany Burrows.
Good evening. The American Indian community has been disentanked historically, beginning with the creation of this country and continuing with the establishment of residential schools designed to kill the Indian and save the man, as well as assimilation programs like the Indian Relocation Act. More recently, we've seen increases in Native American and Alaskan Native representation at the state and federal levels of government with active legislators, members of Congress, Secretary of the Interior Deb Haaland, and National Park Service Director Chuck Samms. Locally, the community has experienced the success of the establishment of the American Indian Cultural Center in twenty seventeen, the removals of both the Pioneer and Columbus statues in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty, respectively, as well as the somber success of May 5th being designated as Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Awareness Day in San Francisco. We've endured the challenge of the Board of Ed unanimously voting to remove or cover the racist murals at Washington in twenty nineteen, only to have the board that sits before us reverse course when faced with a lawsuit from the Alumni Association and vote to overturn that decision in May of this year without the decency of consulting our path, student, or families. We had to find out in the media. Next slide, please. Some of the challenges our students face with regard to educational success include the highest suicide and dropout rates of all ethnic groups, the lowest graduation rates nationwide. Our families also suffer the highest unemployment rates and are seventeen times more likely to be homeless. In schools, our students endure cultural appropriation and racism, the loss of indigenous languages, the lack of humility, sensitivity, and truthful representation in curriculum, and further insulting. On a very basic level, our community doesn't even get recognized at their schools during the Indigenous Peoples' Holiday and Native American Heritage Month. They also experience cultural erasure by not having their statistics included in reports of academic data.
Our program's successes include an elementary-age land acknowledgement, which was developed by our interns and approved by our CAC in May. This past summer, we had thirty-five youth participants in our programming called Many Ways of Knowing, which was at Hummingbird Farms. We also had our first four-week art workshop completed, and a new internship cohort started this September. The fourth-grade curriculum was approved and piloted to teachers in May. Next slide, please. This year, we also held our first annual Native American Heritage Month celebration, which was a citywide event with four hundred attendees and seventy teachers who attended the professional development workshop. We held six Native American cultural workshops at Rutherford School of the Arts for our celebration, our cultural celebration summit. We performed outreach to forty schools, informing them about November being Native American Heritage Month and what that means for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Miley. As many of know, uh, the resolution in support of reclaiming the American Indian-Alaskan Native narrative was passed last January in twenty twenty-one. The resolution consists of nineteen items meant to provide visibility and support to the district's native community. The first item being a formal apology for the historical trauma uh, that our students and communities felt uh, nationwide in the school system. Followed by the agreement to remove all racist imagery and texts, and a promise to update curriculums. This year, we collectively made great strides in several items, the first being the initial meeting with the facilities team to identify the costs of displaying the land acknowledgement at each and every SFUSD site, as agreed upon in items five and six of the resolution. In the resolution, item fifteen, we've made progress in identifying students, now having the five oh six forms in the district's registration page, as well as on our Indian Ed, uh, program website page. This May, we piloted our approved fourth-grade, uh, history curriculum on the Alonies peoples. And sadly, we have not seen, uh, much improvement in the removal of racist imagery, especially the George Washington mural. That being said, uh, I'd love to introduce our, uh, youth interns, Samantha.
Hi, my name is Samantha Duarte, and I'm a senior, and my tribes are Navajo and Apache. This year, we drafted the elementary school land acknowledgement in groups who were assigned a part of the land acknowledgement to rewrite. to rewrite so elementary schoolers would better understand it. It was voted to be displayed to schools on May fifth, twenty twenty-two, the Resolution Number Five and Six, adopting and displaying the land acknowledgement. This should be at all schools. It is important that youth learn this at a young age so they're educated about the land that they stand on. The elementary-age land acknowledgement reads, "We, Indian Ed Program, understand that San Francisco is still the homeland of the Native people that call themselves Ramatosh Alonie. As the Native American caretakers of the Bay Area, the Ramatosh Alonie have never given away, lost, or forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this land and its peoples. As Bay Area residents, we recognize that we benefit from living and learning on Ramatosh Alonie land. We like to recognize the entire Alonie community and their status as the First Peoples. Please support the land acknowledgement and have it displayed at all schools. I'd love to see this happen before I graduate. Thank you."
My name is Gabriel. I'm in ninth grade and my tribe is Palma.
My name is Michelle Ball. I'm in eleventh grade and my tribe is Navajo. We will be talking about the importance of celebrating Native American Heritage Month in schools. Heritage Month is important because of how they tried to erase our culture and way of life. This celebration will help the new generation experience the joy and importance of their heritage.
It is important for us to practice our culture through dancing and making jewelry by showing our talent, because, uh, up in, uh, because from eighteen thirties up until nineteen ninety-six, residential schools are open and taking Native children and forcing them to give up all traditional practices.
And if shown defiance, the children were met with brutal beating, sexual abuse, and death causing generational trauma.
Even though we are at a point where we are more accepted, we are still not acknowledging our schools during Native American Heritage Month.
Next year, we hope that all schools should announce and celebrate Native American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Raymond Tavaki.
Hello, my name is Raymond Tavaki. I am a sophomore in George Washington High School. My tribes are Palma, Nomaleki, Wintun, and Noimi. In twenty nineteen, the SF Board of Education passed the removal slash covering of the George Washington mural. This year, the San Francisco Board of Education dismissed the removal without consulting SFUSD families in a closed-door meeting. The mural. Excuse me? The mural is still shown in George Washington High School and is disgusting to look at while walking inside the entrance of my school. It's vile to show this image to young indigenous adolescents because it glorifies genocide of their people. This mural is disrespectful to those that fought for our land that we are still on to this day. I believe that the mural should be taken down because it portrays white supremacy and it's disrespectful to indigenous people. I hope to see this mural taken down before I graduate. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. So our community is asking that there is a recommitment to the resolution items. We ask that there is a meeting with the superintendent to facilitate successful completion of the resolution items. We would like for you guys to prioritize the removal of all racist imagery, including the Washington mural. Racist imagery glorifies institutional slavery and is unwelcoming to our Native children. We ask that there is an increased visibility of the Native American Heritage Month and updated curriculum requirements that prioritize the American Indian community. We ask that there is, that you provide advocacy for school selection and placement for Native students for active recruitment, hiring, and retention of Native American, Alaskan Native, and especially California Indian teachers in the San Francisco Unified School District. We ask for an immediate commitment to increase and sustain the Indian Education Program and to support in providing insurance for cultural barriers and program consultants. Thank you.
Concludes. Thank you all so much and thank you to our students for presenting tonight, co-presenting. I'd like to open up for public comment at this time.
I will call people in groups of four. So Paloma Flores, Mary Jean Robertson, Poppy Gallegos, and Roden Hartzoff.
Come up to the podium.
Good evening. Show me some way. My name's Paloma Flores. Many of you have seen me in the past, prior to my current role with the American Indian Cultural District, established March thirty-first of twenty twenty. You've heard the truth. None of this is new. Support that resolution of reclaiming American Indian, Alaskan Native narrative, passed almost three years ago, yet of the nineteen points, much has yet to be met, similar to the needs of this community. I'm here to also say, support the removal of that racist imagery. During the public hearings, it was said that it was used as a teaching tool. Then teach the truth. Teach the curriculum that is required in the state of California, that as of October of this year, Assembly Bill seventeen oh three establishes the California Indian Education Act to encourage local educational agencies to form California Indian Education Task Forces with California Indian tribes local to their region and establishes reporting requirements applicable to the task force. The California Indian Educational Task Forces are encouraged to discuss issues of mutual concern and to work to do the following. Develop a thorough, shared understanding of accurate, high-quality curricular materials about the history, culture, and government of local tribes, and develop curricular materials to use within local educational agencies that include tribal experiences and perspectives and teach about the history, culture, and government of local tribes. Support. Events that honor American Indian culture, celebrate the legacy and the truth. Last year, December twenty twenty-one, Sota High School did what no other school site has ever done. They held the first-ever Native American Heritage Day that would not have been made possible had it not been for student-led efforts. It took the students and their courage to put that forth. Support our students. We're still here and we're always gonna be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And each speaker will have one minute. Mary Jean.
Oseem Gigi Merigini Dagwadoa. I just wanted to say first of all that I want to thank all of the students who have been presenting tonight, all of them. It's very brave to get up here and, and present before elders. And I also want to say that all of us have a responsibility to remember that the First Nations people, the first people of this land, are still here. And one of the main goals of the PAC and everything else is to make sure that teachers also are aware that we are still here, that we have a multinational group of students. We are not a race. We are citizens of our own individual nations. And that's got to be taught to everyone. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Poppy Gallegos Sangreli. I am a past SFUSD alum. I graduated in twenty twenty. I'm also a Native student. I'm a third year currently at the University of California, Berkeley. I would not be at Berkeley today if it were not for the efforts of the Indian Education Program coming into my life at a very young age. Really put in perspective what it means to be, you know, an urban Native woman, giving us cultural opportunities, abilities to, you know, be in contact with cultural activities, beating, art-making. The programming that Indian Ed does is very important. And as also the Indigenous and Native Coalition at Berkeley's K-12 Recruitment Coordinator, I have been in contact with Indian Ed about coordinating more programming since the Native Heritage Celebration, where we brought an artist to perform, Motto Waive of Reservation Dogs. It's just such a cool event to come and see indigenous youth and non-indigenous youth interacting, interacting and knowing that, yes, we are still here. Thank you.
Uh, hello. My name is Roden Hartzell. I'm just here to talk to you about the clearly and blatantly racist murals that have been displayed on the George Washington High School. Um, I have not in person seen these murals, but I've seen pictures of them. And I am shocked that they are still there because, I don't know, maybe it's naive, but I thought as a society, we've reached a point where we could recognize racism and not only refuse to take action, but undo action that was already being taken. So I would just like you to think about that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a current senior at Ruth Sawa School of the Arts, and I would like to further address the murals at George Washington High School. The murals are incredibly offensive and dehumanizing. They display horrific and traumatizing images that create a hostile environment for Black and Native American students. The murals glorify Washington and white colonizers in positions of power while putting down students of color. The board's decision to overturn their promise of removing or covering the murals prioritized money over the best interests of their students. How can you uplift Black and Native students at a school that showcases their dead and enslaved ancestors on the walls? I am lucky in that my high school, SOTA, holds school-wide cultural summits. This year, I founded the Indigenous and Multicultural Club to create a safe space for students of color and to stand up for issues that we face, including the racist murals. When I imagine the inclusive and diverse programming that we have at SOTA at existing at other schools in the district, I cannot possibly imagine it being taken seriously at Washington High School when these racist murals sit proudly on their walls. These murals counter everything that we as students of color are fighting to accomplish, and they must be taken down. Thank you.
That concludes our in-person public comment. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this presentation. Each speaker will have one minute. I will call speakers in groups of three. Can we please have it repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Thank you. So I'll call Malia, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. B. Again, that's Malia, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. B. Malia, go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Malia Marincheck. I'm a senior at Ruth Sawa School of the Arts. I want to express my support for the Indian Education Program. I specifically am thankful for the students that have made it possible for the Native American Heritage Summit to exist at my school. I hope that this kind of programming is expanded to other schools within the district. It has been invaluable to see what a diverse community, the indigenous community is. And I wish that it was taught in our curriculum and that students would not have to take the onus to share their culture with others. And I would also like to advocate for the removal of the murals at George Washington High School. I think of the murals that exist at Ruth Sawa School of the Arts, which are colorful and express artistic creativity. My heart goes out to students who have to walk by horrific imagery every day. That does not create a welcoming and conducive environment to learning. I think there is a way to teach history without using and platforming white supremacist imagery. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you so much. Again, I want to commend my former colleagues in the Department of A and E, Internet Education. Thank you to the new director. Thank you to the old director, Paloma. Paloma, the year that we created this program, your opening ceremony was phenomenal, spiritual. I can still see it. I can still feel it. And I thank each of you for the work that you are doing to reach our students. So I hope the public and the board will see that we have all these programs that help students who will get lost in the woodwork if we did not have these programs. It was my honor to serve on the committee to take down the Washington murals with you. And I'm sorry the board retracted on what they were supposed to do. And I hope that they, the board, will reconsider and take those murals down. Now, last, I want to commend the students, uh, students today who spoke tonight. Excellent job. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Ashay, and please continue the great work.
Thank you. Ms. B?
Hello?
Yes, Ms. B?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to appreciate and also acknowledge the tremendous emotional and physical labor enacted over so much time by these young people and elders, asking for something for now decades and being promised it and having it taken away several times, particularly by a board that begins each meeting with a land acknowledgement. And my hope is that this board understands that a land acknowledgement without accompanying action in solidarity with Native communities is deeply embarrassing and offensive. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you so much. I'd like to open up for commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner, shoot. Thank you. I personally was not here when all the discussions about the George Washington murals had gone on and the resolution was passed. But I was here to overturn or to drop the Washington murals. I, I like to, um, just convey that it's good to hear directly from the students. It's good to hear directly from you all about your perspectives. And I also want to highlight that people know about the Washington murals, but maybe not many people know that the artist painted in the African-American and Native American images as a way to challenge the glorification of General George Washington, that the artist kind of subversely painted in those images so that is not all about the glorification of George Washington and, uh, no. And trampling over the, the Native Americans and the African-Americans. And I also wonder if people know that right next to the Life of Washington murals, which is in the main entrance hallway of Washington High School, right next to that, there are three response murals, each highlighting African-Americans, Native Americans, and Asian-Americans. That was painted by an artist in the seventies. I believe it was the nineteen seventies as a response to the George Washington murals next door. And they do celebrate the African-Americans, the Native Americans, and the Asian-Americans' contribution and their role in American history. So I would like people to know some context of the mural itself and also some history and more recent history of the response. And I think it's very educational to have both of them up. If you take down the Washington murals, the response murals make no sense. I think it is an educational opportunity and we, as a school district, should really educate, take this opportunity to educate not just the students, but all of the community about those murals.
Ms. Bogus.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciated having you come, hearing the voices of the students and the families who are a part of our district. And really appreciate. And really appreciate bringing the recommendations and the concerns about what hasn't already been implemented. And just the importance to the community, to the students, to the families at the board, take action. I think I just also want to just acknowledge the pain that people are feeling from the murals. And I think from the lack of representation and connectiveness that they see at their school sites for them and their communities and the nations that they represent. And just really want to figure out how we as a district can do better, understanding that we're struggling in a lot of areas when it comes to student groups. I mean, really supporting them to be successful and seeing themselves in the district. And just really want to be an ally and figure out how we can continue to make this a point of emphasis and really engage as we try to make these improvements as we move forward over the course of this school year. So we don't have to keep waiting and have you keep coming back and saying a lot of the same things that we've heard before. So again, just thank you so much and a lot of appreciation and a lot of empathy for what you're experiencing and going through and really the struggles that students are having to deal with in school buildings every day. Thanks.
Commissioner Weissman Ward. Thank you all for the presentation, especially thank you to the students who are here. I know that it is the last week before holiday break, and many of you are getting ready for finals. So thank you for taking the time. I had a question that maybe is to you all, but maybe also to the superintendent. One of the things that, you know, and this sort of, one of the points that Vice President Bogus mentioned was lack of representation. And so one of the points made early on in the presentation was that the data, certainly the high-level data, but maybe not even the street-level data, it's not disaggregated. And so I'm wondering, what would it take for, on our end, us to understand what those numbers look like? Not just for our student body, our student profile, but also our staff? Because we know representation matters. We know it matters to be able to be in a building and see educators that may have similar lived experiences or similar familial experiences. And so I'm wondering, what would it take for either HR or our data team to understand what our student profile in fact looks like so that we can be more intentional with how we're supporting your work and how we're supporting the work of the district? And if that would, I mean, if that, confirming that that would be helpful, because if it's not, of course, we wouldn't want to use resources.
Thank you for asking that. And of course, we, this is a complicated question because there has been hundreds of years before us in which people have been removed from their land and tribes have been ended. This is by federal government, the same federal government that endorsed these kind of murals that we know quite well about, and we did quite a bit of study on the campus to see those other murals, to understand what the perspective was at that time and realizing that we're in a different time now. Just as the pioneer statue was taken down because of its inappropriateness, so should the mural. And that's how we feel as Native people. Now, going back to the question about numbers, there are people who are recognized through tribal affiliations that are still recognized by the state government. And there are others who have not, that has been eliminated, such as what happened in Los Angeles and the Tongan people, their rights and tribal nation taken away from them for consumeristic, capitalistic ideologies and practices. So this question isn't as easily answered as we would like to say, let's pull it out of the data. Because a lot of people have lost those tribal names and groups, even though the people are still here. So when you hear us up here saying, we're still here, even though the tribal affiliations have been removed, we're still here. It's complicated. We have people self-identifying as Native American, Alaskan Native, but they don't have a tribal affiliation or number anymore. This is due to state and federal practices of removing Indian people from themselves. So I don't know how, if we want to get into a longer discussion about this, it's not so easy. But we do have people who are self-identified, and we have people who complete the 506 federal form who still have tribal names, affiliations, and numbers. So the last we saw, we were seven hundred-plus students self-identified in the city. And I know that Paloma and her organization at the city have a much larger count of Native people in the city who were not previously counted for the things that I've shared with you previously. So yeah, we're happy to talk more about this. It's been a process of removing the Indian even from the Indian. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. And just to understand, to clarify, because we want to make sure our students and our staff are seen and heard. You're asking about the data. So we do, you're asking about when we share the data around different metrics that it's disaggregated for our students. So we do have disaggregated data by Native American, you know, for our Native American students on the achievement data. I'm not sure on the staffing data. Yeah, I guess I'm pulling, because we just released our report.
There, yes, there are numbers. The numbers, we are typically told the numbers are too small to be counted and so therefore not reported back to us.
Because I'm looking, so let me definitely follow up on this because I had, I'm looking at the report, we looked at the data report we shared from last month, in November, where it's where we do report out on American Indian or Alaskan Native.
From the level of the district?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great to see.
Yeah, so we'll coordinate on that. I know in the past, when I've looked at like achievement and outcome data, typically like the school site level, there is, I think, like total numbers that aren't for, their population, the student role numbers at the school are below the numbers to report out, and it just typically shows like an asterisk and stuff like that. So I don't know if that is maybe a little bit.
So maybe we have enough. Statistically, what they say, that, you know, the numbers aren't there to be counted.
It's also privacy concerns when you have a really, a small enough number that it would, by sharing it, it would identify those individuals is also part of the privacy.
So maybe at the school level is where we're talking. We seem to have the district level, level data, but we'll coordinate and see. It definitely, again, one need to respect the regulations and, but more importantly, need to do what we can to make sure we're including folks who want to be part of, need to be part of the conversation.
Thank you. And I'm glad Commissioner Weissman, where you raised about the data reporting because similar to the Asian-American Pacific Islander communities, how important that disaggregation is. And I look forward to Superintendent's report back around his meeting to be set up with the team. A couple of the things that I, you know, recognize from the resolution that I will also be following up with the superintendent and working with you all is around what the students had raised about the land acknowledgement at the elementary, as well as the Native American Heritage Month and how we can incorporate that into our academic calendar. That is something that we've talked about as a board, how important it is to really be able to look the entire academic year and recognizing those cultural importance of our students and our communities. Commissioner, Student Delegate.
Yeah, so in the Program Successes slide on Slide Six, it mentions that last May, they piloted the fourth grade curriculum. And I'm just curious to know if we have a solid timeline for first full-scale implementation of that in all elementary schools.
This is a question for the history team. This is, we're not a curriculum team or a student-based team here.
Okay, let me check in with the history team.
Okay, thank you again so much for the presentation. Thank you so much for our students recognizing your, just in heading into finals, and we really appreciate all of your work.
We will now move to public comment on non-agenda items. I wanted to also acknowledge, I didn't open it up because we've had public comments since then. As a reminder, board rules of California law do not allow board members to discuss comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. Please refrain from identifying staff or students by name. And if you have a complaint about a district employee, we ask that you file a written complaint using the appropriate district complaint procedure. I also want to acknowledge that decorum in this boardroom is absolutely essential. As adults, we have to model behavior that we want to see from our students in the classroom. Our board upholds the highest expectation of civility and decorum at every meeting in order to facilitate constructive and respectful dialogue. Profanity, name-calling, personal attacks, and other offensive language violate our shared community expectations for public meetings and causes harm. We ask our public speakers to be considerate and to keep in mind that our students and families are in audience. And I also want to publicly recognize, I apologize. At our last board meeting, I did not set the tone. I did not express these principles and values. And that I also want to extend my apologies to Commissioner Shu because we had public commenters that break these norms. And as board president, it is absolutely important, and board chair, to be able to name and call out those behaviors as being unacceptable. So with that, now we will see if there is any public comment on non-agenda items.
We do have in-person speakers for non-agenda items. I'd just like to name that we did receive one email, one public comment email. So for in-person, apologies if I'm not pronouncing this properly. Byard Fong, Cody Naylor, Leanna Louis, and Selena Chu. As a reminder, each speaker will have one minute.
Good evening, President Jenny Lamb, Vice President Bogus, and the rest of the school board members. I'm actually a San Francisco native. I came here in nineteen oh five. Attended Galileo High School, proud to, as well as attended City College, as well as Cal. I wanted to take this time to thank, as I understand, Commissioner Shu, this may be the last month with us, and I want to thank you for serving for the last nine months, our district and our students. We, you know, we, I appreciate your valuing the school district's values of diversity, inclusion, and equity. And I want to encourage the rest of the board to continue working as a group because we are one people, San Francisco. And as we work together to build and improve our school district for all our students. So I want to encourage that. And again, thank you for your service, Commissioner Shu. You will be missed.
Hi, my name's Cody. My kid's at kindergarten at Chinese Immersion School, so I'm new here. This school hasn't had a regular principal since October fifth. That's like two years of the school, two-thirds of the school year so far. And now the regular principal is retiring abruptly. It seems like something's up. Have any other school leaders or critical admin staff left or taken extended absences this year? Please look into this. I really hope there's no obvious pattern. At Chinese Immersion School, we need a principal. A lot of families are very interested in the selection process and will love to be a part of it. Thank you for your time, your attention.
So I just want to thank the President Jenny Lamb for actually announcing the policy regarding public comment because my child, which is eight-year-old, third grade, he heard what the person said. So that wasn't the first time, and I appreciate that. So I'm here today. I wanted to, you know, say thank you to Commissioner Ansu. This is her last meeting. And congratulate to, I believe, I saw Alita Fisher. So I wish going forward, whenever there are resolutions or talks among commissioners, please use data and evidence to support your resolutions, less of more assumption. Because we have seen a lot of assumption in the past couple of years, and it just creates a lot of frustration because parents and students' families will discover, you know, the data and the information that wasn't told to us. And it's just, you have lost the trust, and we want to, we want you to re-earn our trust. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Leanna Louis. And I'm still hearing that there's a lot of payroll problems. I'm glad that you're all working diligently on it. And hopefully that'll be resolved because people who work deserve to be paid. And the second thing I want to talk about is I just want to say some words of gratitude for Commissioner Ansu for your hard work while you're a school board member. And yeah, I just want to say thank you, and I really, really appreciate your hard work.
We'll move on to virtual public comment. Each speaker will have one minute to comment on non-agenda items. Please raise your hand if you care to share your comment. And can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor levanta su mano si quiere añadir un comentario público. Este comentario público es para los comentarios que no están en la agenda. Gracias.
Thank you. So I will call people in groups of four. So Ms. Marshall, Charles, Jenny, and David. Again, that's Ms. Marshall, Charles, Jenny, and David.
Thank you so much. I just want to commend some community leaders for providing excellent support services for our students over the weekend. I want to commend the African-American Art and Culture Complex, Ella Hill Hutch, and this coming Thursday at the Baby Opera House. They have a fantastic winter wonderland for our students. At Baby, at the Culture Center, they had all kinds of things for our students to engage themselves in, including a choo-choo train. I even participated in some of the activities with the students. And this coming Thursday, I used to always enjoy watching the kids from Baby Hutch Walk Run Down the Hill to the Opera House and play in the snow. So we want to commend these community-based organizations for going the extra step for our students. And when I was on the mural for, on the Committee for Washington Mural, Commissioner Shu, your comments are not completely correct. It's like saying to me, slavery was okay and it was not. So we met the people who did the mural, the other murals at Washington. We got the real truth, and you did not give us the real truth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Charles?
Hello. I would like to appreciate all the language around transparency. And in that vein, I would like to ask SFUSD to make a searchable database by school or a spreadsheet that will have all the most recent lead testing done at all the SFUSD sites, including water testing. This will help alleviate public concern. To think that lead exposure, which can cause serious intellectual and physical problems, including damage to the brain and the nervous system, slowed growth and development, and learning and behavior problems and hearing and speech problems, to think that that poison would be present at a school that we trust our children to is appalling. Please provide the information easily for the public. If you want to rebuild trust, this would be a start. And trust is at an all-time low. And, you know, the SF Standard reported that lead was in the school drinking. And, you know, the SF Standard reported that lead was in the school drinking water also. Please deal with this abruptly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. Hi, my name is Jenny Pritchett, and I am a parent at Buena Vista Horace Man. My son is five years old and in kindergarten. In the short time he's been in the San Francisco Unified School District, both the soil that he plays in and the water that he drinks have been tested positive for unacceptable levels of lead. I left work early today to help the school tape off all the water fountains. And I have to tell you that although I am a practical person, and initially I thought, well, this is just something that needs to be done. The act of bagging up the water fountains in front of the kindergartners, with the garden behind me surrounded by hurricane fencing, really got to me. As I'm sure you can agree, this is unacceptable for any school site. I am very grateful for how quickly the district and Superintendent Wayne are moving on this. Thank you for opening the meeting with this. And if there's any doubt that safe and clean facilities and water at Buena Vista Horace Man is a priority, I am here to support the emergency resolution. I am very encouraged at the suggestion to complete remediation over the winter break. It seems like there's a plan already in place to remove the soil.
Thank you. I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Thank you. David?
Hello, good evening, everyone, Superintendent Board Members. David Lannan with Department of Technology, also shop steward for Local 21 ProTech. And I'm here to comment on our recently ratified contract with the district. It's been months since we finalized it, and it's been approved. But nothing has been done in terms of administration acting on it and fulfilling their end of it. I know all the unions are in process at some stage of fulfillment of their contracts and renewal. And we're not in competition with them. We're in unity with them. But one of the things that's a problem with our union is that there has been no communication from administration until recently. I mean, no one has replied to our leadership's request for communication, and that leads to low morale and just loss of faith. So I'm asking the board and superintendent to please follow through with what they promised and agree with us on, and help restore the communication and faith that we have in SFUSD and its leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the next group. It's gonna be Meredith, Todd, Betty, and Student. Again, Meredith, Todd, Betty, and Student. Meredith, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Meredith Dodson with the San Francisco Parent Coalition. Thanks for taking my comment. There's quite a long, packed agenda tonight. And also, parents couldn't help but notice that topics directly related to student learning, student outcomes, and the new Board of Education Vision Plan are mostly lacking from the agenda. We know later in the evening you'll be hearing the first interim budget report. What we don't see, but we're curious about, is how we're adjusting our budget based on our new commitments to our students in math, literacy, and career and college readiness. Our district is committing to a major literacy overhaul, and thank you for that. But how will the parent community be assured that our new goals and these big plans will be reflected in our district budgeting and decision-making processes? We're well aware that SFUSD is still deficit spending. We encourage you to fix that. And at every meeting, prioritize a conversation about student outcomes and how our budget is matching up. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Good evening. My name's Todd Albert. I'm a science teacher at Buena Vista Horace Man. I am just so appalled at how unacceptable this is. I am across the hall from one of the water fountains that tested positive for lead, and I watched dozens of students drink from it daily. Lead is harmful even at low levels, causing hearing loss, anemia, kidney impairment, and stunted growth. Three of 11 of our fountains are tested positive for lead, and we need to fix this. A first-grade student asked me today why they could not play in the garden. I did not have the heart to tell him that it was not safe, but I said, because you're getting it ready for him. So please fix this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Betty Hunter. I'm an alum and as well as a parent of SFUSD. I didn't get to speak at the end of comment for the last agenda item. And so I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the ass of the American Indian PAC as well as in support of the work that they've done. I just want to congratulate them and the students on all that they have contributed and asks that the mural be taken down. George Washington, I actually have seen it in person in the past and recently. And so I think that this is really I think that this is really important for all of our students and hope that the board will go ahead and change their mind, especially because people's feelings do matter. Also, I would like to say that SFUSD's website has been hard to navigate, to find data and things of that nature. And is there any way that that can be fixed or made more comprehensive for everyone? Thank you.
Thank you. Student?
So my name's Amichita, and I don't like how the water has poison in it. And, and I don't like how the gardens glow because, because the garden is my favorite place. And I love it because usually I eat the red raspberries there. It's my favorite because there's plants there. And there are little plant houses that I go under. Just the garden is my favorite. The garden is my favorite because it's my favorite, and there's so much stuff to look on it. And there are animals in there that we get to look at. And also, I miss you know that kind of fun in the garden. And, and I want, and I want the bad soil. I want the bad little thing that, that's in the soil get out so I can play back in the garden.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Rianda, Sam, Eric, Mary, and Bernice is the next group. Again, Rianda, Sam, Eric, Mary, and Bernice. Rianda? Rianda? Sam?
Hello, I just want to say one minute isn't long enough to say what I need to say. I got a call today from my principal that my child was identified as one of three children in an RSP class that was drinking pretty much a lot every day from a faucet that was tainted with lead. That is a phone call I got today. They never would have tested the water if it weren't for us families and teachers and staff demanding the district test the water at the SSC meeting. I am so angry. My child, both my children, had to be tested for lead today. Blood tests not provided by the city, not provided by the district. That's ridiculous. That is not a public health response to potential mass poisoning. Arsenic in the ground and lead in the ground should automatically cause water testing. And y'all avoid systematic data collection and testing of the air, water, soil of all of your facilities. It is avoidance, avoidance, shame.
Thank you. Eric?
Hello, my name is Eric. Good evening to the board. And like a previous speaker, I'd like to revisit one of the previous agenda pieces, as I believe that was skipped over. But for my allotted time for my public comment, I would like to highlight the commitment that is demonstrated by Indigenous students and the Indian education program. Just this past month, I attended the Native Heritage Celebration, which was hosted at Sanchez Elementary School on November 5th. As an Indigenous Mexican person, I find it crucial to continue promoting celebration and the education of all Indigenous cultures, especially during Native Heritage Month. And that was extremely evident during the celebration as the event was welcoming to all community members in San Francisco from various backgrounds, Native and non-Native. Moving into the future, I would hope to see more support by the SFUSD for the Indian education program to continue pursuing projects across district sites and campuses like the Native Heritage Celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary? Mary?
Yes, good evening. I attempted to speak on the last issue for Indian Ed. My name's Mary Travis Allen. I'm the Advisory Board President for the American Indian Cultural District. I want to say I'm in absolute awe of the presentation that was given, but I need to respond to the remarks that was made afterwards in defense of the decision for the murals that was inappropriate. After the presentation, it was demeaning to the presentation. It was disregard for what was expressed by a community. And to have that response made, it was defense of a decision that was made. It was most inappropriate. And when we talked about conduct, that should be put on point to uplift the community, support the community, is what we have been endeavoring to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernice?
Good evening. My name is Bernice Casey. I'm a parent of two children at the San Francisco Unified School District. One's a graduated BVHM and one still attends. Superintendent Wayne, it was very disingenuine of you to start your meeting talking about what the district has done for Buena Vista Horace Man. Today, the district circulated a memo after the testing saying SFPUC testing did not return any concerning results, which is not true. It's also not true that this district responded to our facility complaints. That is absolutely not true. We came to your board, we complained through Williams. It wasn't until Mission Local published shaming photographs that the district responded. It's also not true that the district did inspections. Those inspections were based on advocacy by Supervisor Hillary Ronan. So just like the previous speaker talking about truth, it is disingenuine for you as a board to say you are helping this community when you're not. You should start by saying what you don't do before parents like me will believe that you actually care about the children on this side of the city.
Thank you. The next group is Eileen, Monica, Vivette, and Em. Eileen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So hi, my name is Eileen, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner in the school district. I am concerned with how much time we've spent in this meeting talking about topics unrelated to educational outcomes of students. With a projected decrease in 8% enrollment, what are we doing to focus more on student learning and teacher retention? Finally, I want to extend my gratitude to Commissioner Ansu. Thank you for being focused on student outcomes. Your leadership will be sorely missed.
Thank you. Monica?
Hi, my name is Monica Mendosa. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Buena Vista Horace Man. And I want to emphasize the importance of providing a mobile clinic onsite at our school so that members of the community can be tested for lead, lead poisoning. It is unacceptable that it took the pressure that we and the parents, parents and staff have been pushing for a response for anything to be done with regards to testing the water after finding lead and arsenic in the soil. And then thankfully, they are providing bottled water. However, that is just a Band-Aid on a much larger issue. And I look forward to seeing the water getting fixed. And hopefully soon, a mobile clinic so that community members can be tested.
Thank you. Vivette?
Hello, everyone. I'm here tonight in solidarity with the Indigenous Peoples' presentation. Number one, I'd like to echo the sentiments that this board continues to let certain communities commit racial violence against others by making disparaging comments. This is not the first time a community has been attacked, and this board has failed to address that. Especially our President Jenny Lamb, who said that this was not supposed to be tolerated behavior. But it seems that there's certain communities which remain constant targets of these types of rhetoric while other communities are supported and protected. It's disgusting. Secondly, I'd just like to say we wouldn't even be dealing with the Bayview Horseman, Buena Vista Horseman issues and issues at other schools across the district on the southeast side if this district had actually monitored the C-Bot and ensured that the bond money was spent correctly. Buena Vista Horseman was one of the schools that were actually supposed to be repaired in the 2016 bond, along with Malcolm X and a bunch of other schools who are having similar issues. And I think that this board needs to stop letting people call in and make this fake rhetoric about student outcomes when we're talking about the safety and health of students. If students are not safe or health at their primary school, they cannot learn when they are getting diseases because of arsenic and other things happening. This is, this is where students are, this is where our district is failing students and their parents.
Thank you. Em?
Hi, my name is Em. I am the co-chair, the vice-co-chair for the Parent Advisory Council, not committee. Some SFUSD staff so far keep calling us the Parent Advisory Committee, but I want to remind everyone we're the Parent Advisory Council. With that, I want to also make a comment about Commissioner Sue's, I guess, explanation. I'm not really sure what to call, what the remarks are, other than basically offensive. When I was on the Reflection Action Committee, we did so much research. We had so many meetings of talking about the George Washington life of Washington murals. And the reason why we came to the conclusion that they should be painted down is because from the months-long of research that we did. And so I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Sue, but it is also extremely offensive because you are talking to people who are here on this call or who are there in person, who've done the research. We know all about the response murals and the other murals and this murals and that murals. So please remember to hold that wisdom that people already have around that and that knowledge. And to also just to remind the other commissioners, who are actually still left and will be in their positions, that when will you finally listen to the students? It's been decades ever since MLK has died that students at George Washington High School have said, paint it down.
Thank you. I'm sorry to have to cut you off. That is your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next group, Rianda, Jasenya, and Gail. Rianda?
Okay, apologies for the disconnection earlier. But good evening, everyone. I'm speaking tonight as a mom. I stand with the Indian Ed PAC. While it is admirable to do the land acknowledgement before every meeting, I believe if we truly seek to honor the Native American people, it's time to correct the wrong that's staining George Washington High School. Having a mural with a negative depiction of Native American and African-American people is disgusting and shouldn't be allowed in SFUSD. Our students are amazing and more than capable of Googling if they want to learn history. These dehumanizing murals are not needed to remind students of the same associated with this country. We have to do better. These dehumanizing murals are not needed to remind students of the same associated with this country. We have to do better. Listen to current students and families and please honor their request to have their murals removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail?
Hi, my name is Gail Eigel and I've been at the Buena Vista Horace Mann site for twenty-one years, almost twenty-two. Um and I initially was just going to call about the abhorrent conditions at our school, the fact that the water wasn't tested. But I want to address the comments by the people talking about student outcomes and saying that nothing in the agenda so far had been about student outcomes. If students have lead poisoning, how will their testing be? How will their tests be? Their academic tests. And I just also want to say that academic testing is not the only measure of student outcomes, nor is certain kinds of curriculum. The wonderful programs put on by the Indigenous Peoples' groups, the the students, that is good for student outcome as well as um the um in the immigrant migrant program. Super, super important for student outcomes. Um thank you.
Thank you. That concludes a public con- virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. We're heading into our third hour of our meeting. Um so at this time, I think we had heard from students. I don't see any other students in the audience in person. So I just wanted to do one last call for students, but I want to acknowledge we also had um students speak earlier. This evening.
Uh if you're a student and you care to share a public comment and you're participating online, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to um Agenda Item J for action items. Twenty-two, twelve, thirteen uh thirteen SP two fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, first interim report. Positive fiscal certification for SFUSD and County Office of Education. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Like to call upon uh Dr. Wayne.
So yeah, just first I want to say we do have uh Anne Marie Gordon on, correct? Okay. Uh good evening again, uh Board of Education. Um so we are presenting our first interim report. This is a required report um that we submit every year to the state. Uh and it is one in a series of reports we do on our budget uh throughout the year. So what what the budget is approved by uh the Board of Education in June. And then there's a uh, we did a fall revise this year because we received additional revenue. And this is the first time uh uh where we check on how we're doing uh and looking at our revenue. Uh um how our revenue assumptions compared when we adopted the budget to where they are now and how our expenditures um are. And we have to provide a certification of whether we have a positive certification, meaning we can meet our obligations, a qualified, meaning there's concerns and meeting our obligations or a negative certification. And so we are submitting a positive certification uh and but there are aspects of our budget to be aware of. And so um with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anne Marie Gordon, uh our interim head financial officer to present the first interim report.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Um can I just confirm that you all can hear me okay?
Yep. Yes, Anne Marie, we can hear you.
Thank you. Um good evening, everybody. Uh as Dr. Wayne said, I am Anne Marie Gordon. I am our interim head financial officer and this evening we'll be going through uh a review of both our county and district uh first interim financial reports. I'll be speaking to the highlights, um major changes and takeaways as we move forward and start looking towards our budget development process for the upcoming school year. Next slide, please. So as Dr. Wayne shared, this is the first of two interim reports, um part of our annual uh reporting requirements. And our interim reports, one sim- one in December and one in March. Report identified changes to revenues, expenditures, and fund balances and also provide multi-year projections for the following two fiscal years. Uh the first interim period focuses on July to October of the school year. And so the focus of first interim in most cases uh is changes to revenue and budget. Um since it's relatively early in the school year to see notable expenditure trends. As I go through this, I do want to note in advance that um that for anyone who's looking at the first interim report and the budget forms, you'll see that the expenditures are are very low and that is uh because one of our symptoms of uh implementation of Empower SF has been a learning curve for how to post our payroll expenditures uh in basically on a monthly basis as payroll is processed. And so we did receive a confirmation from CDE that we could report our first interim without having that data fully available, but we will be uh prioritizing getting payroll expenditures posted uh for our second interim report. And as Dr. Wayne said as well in the introduction, that of the, there are three possible certifications. And for first interim this year, for both the county and the district, um we are bringing forward a positive certification, meaning that we will be anticipate being able to meet our financial obligations this year and in the coming years. Next slide. So I will begin with the San Francisco County Office of Education. Um this is one of the steps that we uh that we made to presentations last year was to differentiate between our county and district reports to make sure that our obligation to both is clear. And so for the county, we are bringing forward a positive certification. Next slide. You'll see over throughout the slide deck, a number of tables. Um they're all formatted uh like this uh where they go through our kind of the different steps of how we do the math to see how we're looking in terms of our budget um and expenditures over the course of the year. So looking at this, um I, for for this report, I compared to our adopted budget in June. And so starting at the top with the beginning fund balance, that is our right, our funds that are available from all prior years accumulated when we start the year. Uh you can see that for the county, we have an improved beginning fund balance compared to our original estimate. Um this come, this data comes from our unaudited actuals. Looking at the revenues and expenditures, um there are really only minor updates um compared to the adopted budget. And some of that has to do with loading carryover funds that are confirmed available for us to um to use in the current year. One note, if you're looking at the county budget compared to prior years, is that uh in continuing to strive to differentiate between our county and district functions, um we have increased our county budget to uh to better reflect our responsibilities as a county office. And so our payroll department and legal departments are now part of the county office uh budget. And one final note here, um in the net surplus or shortfall column section, uh row D, you can see that uh we are deficit spending in our county budget. Um you'll see, we'll talk about this with the district as well, but that because we start off in a better place this year, we anticipate um ending in a better place uh despite the deficit spending. Next slide, please. So here we have our multi-year projections. The uh column highlighted in yellow is the same column that you saw on the previous slide. And so the format here is the same, but showing our projections over the next two years. You'll see as you go through that our uh our projection is that we will remain balanced uh over the next two years. But deficit spending does mean that we are drawing down our fund balance. We are using the funds that we have available. And so we end up balanced, um but really with with no room to spare uh in the next two years should our revenue and expenditures um grow modestly over that time. Next slide, thank you. Um so now we'll move on to the districts and what you'll see as we as we move forward is really similar patterns. Um but our districts, our district budget, our district general fund is much larger than the county. And so the numbers are are much bigger, but the patterns i- and our practices really, really are quite similar. So here you see the district's unrestricted general funds. Um the first interim budget highlighted compared to the adopted budget from June. And you'll see again, starting at the top, um that we have an improved beginning fund balance uh of about nine million dollars and nine million dollar improvement from what we anticipated. As we look at revenues and expenditures, you can see that our revenue uh does represent a significant increase uh from our local control funding formula projections. That said, the forty million dollar increase in revenue has been offset by a forty million dollar increase in our budget. Uh and this is primarily based on negotiated salary increases with our labor partners um support from with consultants for Empower SF, uh most notably A and M. And in addition to that, um temporary staffing support to address uh adi- additional staffing needs and ongoing vacancies. Oh, almost done.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, sir.
Um so as you look, one note here on that uh net surplus line is that that is just looking within the current year. So that twenty-two million dollars in red is um is deficit spending in the current year without accounting for our fund balance. So then down at the bottom in that final section, you can see that we do have an ending fund balance uh which consists of non-spendable stores items, our rainy day reserve that we replenished um from our Prop G litigation, a budget stabilization reserve, which um we'll see is going to help us over the next couple of years. And then our our um reserve for economic uncertainties, which is a a required aspect of all of our financial planning. And then that eight million dollars at the at the very bottom is really the result of a stronger starting fund balance than we anticipated. Next slide. This slide now is uh taking a step back and looking at the combination of our unrestricted and restricted general fund resources. So this is all resources that are part of our district general fund. When you incorporate our restricted general fund into the picture, um things do look better and slightly more stable. Um this is partially due to the fact that not all of our restricted revenue uh changes based on declining enrollment in the way that the majority of our unrestricted general fund calculations uh or forecast is is developed. We do have to be very cautious and 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 deliberate in how we plan for restricted funding because it is restricted. And so we have to make sure that we are abiding by requirements and understanding how the funds are intended to be used. Uh that said, uh state block grants, new local measures, and now other sources of short-term funding do present a new opportunity for SFUSD over the next couple of years for planning and prioritization to make sure that we are fully tapping into all of the funding sources that we have available to us. Next slide. For our multi-year projections, um this is the second to last table. Um we are going back to only looking at the unrestricted general fund. Looking at the trend from first interim out over the next two years, you'll see that our fund balance will be drawn down, so that beginning fund balance line uh lessens each year. Our revenue forecast right now is re- is pretty flat um because we still are experiencing declining enrollment. And there is uncertainty around the forecast for the state budget moving forward. Our expenditure growth here is projected to be modest, really only growing for step-in column increases and cost of living adjustments. So really basic, really basic increases that we would anticipate um year over year. And again, if you look down at the bottom, actually, we can go to the next slide. Uh down at the bottom here, you can see that similar to the county, the district is projected to remain balanced, uh but where that budget stabilization reserve was established to help avoid severe budget balancing measures and reductions in a short timeframe. Over the course of the next several years, we anticipate drawing down that reserve um to a point where we'll need to be really thinking carefully about how we will balance our budget year over year and looking forward. Next slide. So wrapping up here, um the major takeaways are that we are recommending that positive certification, that we're in a position where over the next two years, we do, we do meet our financial obligations. Um part of that due to the fact that we we began the year in a stronger position than we anticipated. Where our revenues have come in higher, we have matched that with higher budgeted expenditures. And we have continued our pattern of deficit spending. And so though our fiscal outlook is positive, we do continue to spend more than we generate across all of our sources. Next slide. So looking forward from here, in January, in the middle of January, the governor will share a preliminary state budget for next year. And that provides a first look at California's budget forecast, which informs SFUSD's budget forecast. In the short term, our um state block grants, newly newly approved local and state measures do provide one-time funding for us to consider emergent and unaddressed priorities. But beyond that, and as we move forward, again, recognizing that there is a bit more stability in in our restricted funding and acknowledging our pattern of deficit spending, there's a medium and long-term opportunity to really think about how we are allocating resources um to ensure that we are focusing on our students, the supports that they need, and balancing our budget in a way that meets our financial obligations as well. So with that, I uh conclude my presentation and um look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I'd like to open for oh, before I go there, before I open to public comment, I want to ask for a motion in a second on the interim pos- uh interim, first interim report, positive fiscal certification.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And we'll dis- I'm all discombobulated this evening. Um and so I will now open for public comment.
We don't have any um in person, but we did receive two emails um this afternoon. And then moving on to virtual public comment, um please raise your hand if you care to share a public comment on this uh interim report. You'll have one minute to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor levante su mano si desean ir a un comentario público. Los comentarios públicos solo son de un minuto. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. So Meredith, Vivette, and Charles, again, that'll be Meredith, Vivette, and Charles. Meredith, go ahead, please.
Thank you. This is Meredith Dodson again with the San Francisco Parent Coalition. Um, so first, I just want to reiterate, and thank you um for this report and um for the information that you're sharing here tonight with the community. First, I would just want to reiterate our concern about the deficit spending that we're continuing at SFUSD. It's really troublesome to see, and I hope we could start to address that. Um, we know that these state and federal funds are not going to just continue on forever. Um, and also, um, we're seeing that we still have no fiscal reserve. Um, I'm not a fiscal expert, but I think we've seen um information out there that best practices are for districts to maintain a minimum of five percent reserve. Um, so there's that. And then also, um, in the presentation, um, the Anne Marie Gordon mentioned the short-term opportunities to of the one-time funds for emergent and unaddressed priorities. Given that literacy, math, college and career readiness have been identified as board priorities, wondering if some of these um one-time funds can be used for the math tutoring, the literacy tutoring, and other urgent needs that our students have, still, you know, coming out of the distance learning and the pandemic, and there are so many needs that our students have.
You, Meredith, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. That is your time.
No problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Vivette?
Hi, so um I have several concerns. My number one concern continues to be um this now almost bloated to ten million dollar contract with um M and A um for payroll services. Um, being that this company is one that tends to put districts in headlocks and strength and lengthens out their contracts for decades at a time. Um, I think it's concerning to me on what is going to be the final solution for the payroll situation. And if we are going to have to keep a ten million dollar contract with a contractor while we're deficit spending, that's a really big concern for me, because that money really should be spent and is being taken away from our reserves that we should be using to hire teachers, to staff, and to be able to deliver programs to our students who are in need. And so while um I know that you guys continue to say that we are starting off the district at a strong point, that a strong point is only because we failed to do hiring and that there's all of these open positions. So it's not kind of accurate to say that we're in a strong position, starting off this district, where we're actually only in a strong position because of the deficit that is being experienced in the classroom.
I'm so sorry to have to cut you off. That is your time. Thank you. Charles?
Yes, um, I also do not appreciate the continued deficit spending. It kicks it down the road and doesn't solve the structural deficit. Please be bold and reduce expenditures by shrinking the size of the district to match the enrollment. How many under-enrolled schools do we need? As far as the state budget goes, there will most likely be a recession in the next one to two years. So we so we should expect a reduction in those funds. Where is the money for raises for teachers and other school workers? There seems to be only minimal increases included in this budget. Please, we need to restructure the district boldly so that we can find funds to actually pay people appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next I will call uh Shelley and then Ms. Marshall. Shelley, go ahead, please.
Pardon me, my mouse is slow. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Gordon. I have only one question, and that is when discussing increase in expenditures, when mentioning uh temporary or substitute workers for our staffing deficit. When we have a staffing deficit, that means that person's salary becomes available for the sub. It concerns me greatly that we're paying subs a considerable amount or more than we would have paid the existing permanent employees. Perhaps at some point, uh, we could have some more clarification on this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you for the report. I my concerns uh would be like some of the other speakers. I'm still at awe about this ten million dollars for this uh payroll system is not working. I suppose it's too late to get out of the contract. I I just, I don't understand it. And then for the public, it would be good to hear, since we're a unique city and county, what, what items are spent through for the through the county and what are spent through through the city of for the uh for the school district? Because it's kind of, I don't, I don't, I don't know what that, I don't know what they are, and it would be nice, it would be nice to hear that. And where is the county offices at five-five Franklin? And what do they do? So I know we are, that we are one of the few unique cities in the whole country. It would be nice to have that other clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Aleen?
Hi, this is Aleen again, uh parent of SFUSD kindergarten. I want to reiterate my earlier point on focusing on student outcomes. If we can educate our students to be college and career ready and rebuild trust in families, then we can start bringing families back into the district. Without attracting and retaining families, we will continue to be in this problem of deficit spending. And eventually, there will be no rainy day fund left. SFUSD education is a product. We need to think about how to get customers to buy our product, or else they will go to our competitors, private schools and other districts. Thank you.
Thank you. President Lamb, that concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. I'd like to open up to commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. I want to ask about um restricted funds. Um, and I think I raised this before, but I think it's confusing when we have with the the reports kind of go back and forth between the unrestricted general fund and then all of our funds. And I just think we need to be really. I I I think they, I think we should see both, right? I understand the unrestricted general fund is a particular, particularly important piece of our budget, but the whole budget is much bigger than that. And um so so there's no multi-year projections for the whole budget, which I think is confusing. But I guess my specific question right now is why was there such a big increase in restricted fund balance? We went from a hundred and seventeen million in the adopted budget of a projected restricted fund balance at the end of the year to almost a hundred and seventy million. So again, I I and I just think, and we haven't had, I think the board also needs to understand what those restricted funds are and why, so why are we getting fifty million more dollars, more than fifty million more dollars, and then and not spending it this year? Does that make sense? My question?
Yes, yes, and I can, I can speak to it in part. Um, so I believe from the unaudited actuals, um, one, there's, there's one component that is in general, spending less than we anticipated spending. That does not account for the full fifty million dollars, um but that is one contributing factor. Another is um really due to the fact that as we receive uh some of our restricted funds, especially some of our short-term but multi-year funds, like federal stimulus funds or the learning recovery dollars that we first received beginning in uh the spring of twenty-twenty-one. We receive those in one, sometimes in one apportionment, that then we use over several years. And so as we intend to spread our funds over a couple of years, it means that they s- they they were, they stay in the fund balance until we have programmed them out. Uh, and one specific example there is uh, as we were developing our learning recovery plan, we received a combination of state and federal resources. And the strategy we decided to use was to spend our state dollars first, because they expired first, and hold on to the federal dollars to be able to spread those over the full duration of the grant period, which goes for another couple of years. So again, if that doesn't answer the, you know, that that is one, that is one factor of the, really the timing of when we receive funds and how we plan to use them over a multi-year period.
So I think that that's really helpful. I think what would be useful moving forward so that we can, so the board can understand this, but also to be transparent with the public, is to really account for those restricted funds. So if that's a decision we're making, that makes sense to spread them. But we need to be able to explain that in a transparent way, so that folks understand kind of what's happening here, and then how it's aligned to our goals and being spent in accordance with our guardrails. And I think that, so as we move into budget development, I'd really like to ask that we do a much deeper dive on the restricted funds, um, please.
We can do that.
And that, I appreciate that, Commissioner Alexander, because plus one. Ms. Matomany?
I just want to say, well, I want to start with a thank you to Anne Marie Gordon. This is a real um, a step in the right direction. I can tell you've put in a lot of time and effort, and the presentation was very clear uh in conveying a lot of dense um and complicated information. So thank you very much, and thank you for working so closely with our um fiscal es- experts to get this to a place where we can have positive certi- certification. Um, I do also want to raise that, um, you know, this is the first interim. Payroll hasn't posted, as you mentioned. We are deficit spending, as we've heard from public comment. It doesn't bring into labor contract negotiations and outcomes for our certificated and classified salaries. Um, we anticipate more need for um system improvements in the district, I think. And um it also impacts our budget stabilization reserve three years out. There's some other areas around assumptions that I have questions about that I'm not expecting you to answer right now. But as we move forward, I just want to flag, um, and that's around enrollment and also int- attendance. Um, and pension and retirement coverage. We, I also do want to, and some more appreciations first, though. Um, I do really like the breaking out of the county operations or and our um local education agency operations to really start to clarify what those um jobs are and what those responsibilities are, so we can align ourselves as a district and better organize ourselves to conduct the work. I also want to appreciate the facility's master plan and how that affects our budgeting. Um, in preparation for this item, I went back to our FITMAC report that we received on March third of last year, the final financial health risk analysis, where we were certified or identified as high risk. And there's a lot of items that um I'd like to get clarification and updates on, especially as we come around the corner to it being a year since we received that report. And it will affect how we um our certainty around the budget and our understanding of things like unrestricted versus restricted and staffing ratios and whether or not we have fraud controls in place. So these are, I'm just putting a pin and a number. I know we're at first interim, and I really do see the huge progress that's been made. But I also want to be mindful that there's a lot of assumptions and behaviors and practices that are still um present in our work, that we need to be transparent about how we're addressing, since they've been so clearly identified. And we don't always, as much as we um appreciate our Department of Education colleagues, that the the purpose is we are supposed to get on our own footing and be responsive to the findings of the FITMAC report and also um what our Department of Education experts are telling us. So with that, I don't know, Anne Marie, if there's anything in there that you want to respond to regarding timing or awareness of these issues, you're welcome to, but you're also welcome to just listen to my monologue. So I appreciate you.
Thank you. Um, I think I'll just, I'll just say that um it was really helpful to start looking back at some of those findings from the fiscal health risk assessment. And we can, we can do more of a comprehensive review of some of those findings and the steps we have taken or where we still have limitations to address uh some of them. But I think that that will help us, right? As we, as we're looking at our picture and thinking about what our plan will be moving forward, um really holding that closely and thinking about where we have been instructed to take steps um to stabilize.
Vice President Bogus?
Yeah, I I was actually gonna ask if Elliot or other folks from the state team wanted to add in or give any kind of perspective, um, that would be kind of helpful or relevant for us to kind of understand how potentially the state or kind of other folks outside the district are um kind of looking at where we're at right now in our steps uh forward.
I am more than willing to make comments, um Vice President Bogus and President Lamb. I don't know if you want them before or after all of the commissioners have had an opportunity to speak, either way.
Well, Elliot was gonna ask you the same questions, Vice President Bogus, so I think this is a great time.
Okay, well, fir- first of all, I have to give a big, big thanks to Ms. Anne Marie Gordon. Uh, she's just done a yeoman's job with this budget. And and I have to say, um, sitting here, it's over a year that I've been sitting at these board meetings. And this is a much better outlook, both in terms of the budget and in terms of um where the board is at in looking at the budget and taking your deficit seriously. I share with um Commissioner Matomany, with um Ms. Gordon, and I'm sure with my um cohort, Pamela Zon, the concern about deficit spending. Um, there are two kinds of deficit spending. There's purposeful, where you're spending down some of the things like the um, like the restricted re- um funds that Ms. Gordon was talking about, and that's a good thing. They come in big chunks, sometimes in the years you don't want them. So you keep them and then spend them down in other years. But when you're spending down reserves, because your budget is still more than your revenue on your ongoing operations, that still is a serious concern. You are meeting your fiscal obligations, but sooner or later, that road ends. And we don't like seeing the budget stabilization fund being eroded. There are a number of things that I would like to point back to the fiscal health reserve analysis, a risk analysis, and um one of them is the um, the deficit spending. The other is the lack of controls and procedures, which we are all working on and hoping to get in place much clearer and much sooner. They're they're necessary, they're um urgent. And I think it will be difficult to balance the budget in the end without proper controls. The declining enrollment is a major issue. And I remember at the very first meeting I observed, I think before I was even assigned, I heard Ms. Gordon using the word true up. Well, you are going to have to continue to true up your resources with your expenditures. And that includes staffing resources. And hopefully, it it's not a blessing to be understaffed, but it might help truing up the staff to the actual number of children enrolled. So I, that's going to have to be something that is interdepartmental in the district and looked at very carefully. The other thing is, um, while I see the board as much more stable than it was, uh, I want to thank um the team from the Council of Great City Schools. You still have instability in the district. Um, you still have positions to fill. You still have instability in the district. Um, you still have positions to fill. You have a superintendent that's five months in. You have a new board member coming on. And from the outside, while it may feel more stable to you, it is still unstable and I I would caution the district to, in any way you can, to continue on the road to stability. Um, that is one of the things when you look at great districts and fiscally solvent districts, there's ongoing stability, ongoing patterns of expenditure and revenue. And those are the kinds of things that thick Matt would look at in the fiscal health review analysis. I'm trying to think of what else. Um, I was gonna say the the issue with posting um posting um staffing expenditures payroll is clearly a major issue. It makes it very difficult to know where you stand at any given point. I think, again, Ms. Gordon has done a great job in figuring out where we think we are or where you I feel like I'm we now, so you'll forgive me, um, full in, and I know Ms. Lizon is full in. But I think we all have a long way to go to get to the point where we can say this is an accurate picture of our budget today. All that being said, you know, I, Ms. Lizon may have some comments. She's, as I've said before, she's the brains on the mouth. Um, but again, I want to congratulate Ms. Anne Marie on just a tremendous job on this interim report. Given the circumstance, I mean, her staff has been with one foot fixing empowering the other foot, trying to get the budgets done, and you're all to be commended. I want to thank you all and and the board for your continued support of your fiscal staff. Happy to answer any other questions.
Anne, did you have additional insights you'd like to share?
Well, I'd just like to say that um I feel very confident that Anne Marie Gordon and also her um executive director or interim executive director Emily Meyer, they did uh an outstanding job working through this first interim report. This was really probably the more um I would say the easier one to be doing. So we're already going to be starting right away on the second interim report in January so that we can present that information to you in March. And I feel very confident that they are going to have a lot more information to share with you and more details, um, especially moving towards the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. But they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Anne Marie. Um, I had additional questions related to, well, it's been over a year um with our fiscal experts and the tremendous work that fiscal experts have also coached and guided um the budget team and the district overall. Um, Elliot spoke a little bit as well as Commissioner Matomany raising about um the fix mat and the fiscal health risk. While it is not our role as the board to tell the superintendent the how, still, one of the major concerns that I have in this next phase is around the fiscal operations. So I wanted to ask, you know, how does um to the fiscal experts, you know, how do we reconcile uh at the governing body level around now with some, you know, acknowledgement around a positive um recommendation uh whilst needing to address the fiscal health, um, you know, and and hearing from the superintendent that commitment to around that progress, but what are some things that you would coach us on or advise us particularly around the fiscal operations, which again is not directing the superintendent on the how, but really at the um at the board level, things that we need to be monitoring closely around progress and understanding the risks?
That's a short question, if you're asking us. Um, I think, first of all, keeping the framework of the FHRA front president is is critical. I mean, we would tell you that, we would tell staff that. We look at that as a guideline because those are, they're they're not, they're not criteria that are pulled out of a hat. They're ones that have been seriously concerned, I mean, seriously vetted over a number of years and that really are predictive of a district's fiscal health. So it it's kind of ironic to say that in a way you can be meeting your obligations, but you're still not fiscally healthy. And I think that's that's the condition. That's how I would phrase it because sooner or later along the road you're going, you're going to reach that place where you can't reach them. So I I want to reiterate the putting in place fiscal controls, um, making sure your staffing matches your revenues. I recognize that you have a severe staffing issue in terms of getting permanent staff. It probably doesn't help to know you're not alone, but um everybody in the state is is encountering this and it's probably doubled down in San Francisco for a number of things. And so that's very important to continue on that staff uh staffing. I know the superintendent intends to bring an organizational plan that I think will lend greatly to stability in the district. Um, and listen to Anne Marie. She she's telling you the important things and and I I will say, I hope I'm um along the line with your your advisors from Council of Great City Schools. You, it may not be your role to dictate the how. You are talking about the what, but it's also your role to understand the how. And I believe as board members, as we encourage staff to ask of us, you have every right to know what what is being done to get to the, I mean, what the how is to get to the what? Boy, that's a mouthful. Did that make sense? But you have a right to know and where you're at in terms of the fiscal health risk analysis. And and I applaud those comments. Also, again, want to thank Superintendent Wayne. Um, he's come a long way. We're we're sitting in a much better position than we were a year ago. I understand the issues were within power, but I think declaring a state of emergency and repositioning staff law has been painful for a number of people, has been in a very, very crucial. And I I just encourage people to keep moving forward and not slow down and not stop.
Thank you. Right. Think that will, yeah, Dr. Wayne?
Um, uh, thank you for the discussion and I appreciate Anne Marie Gordon for the uh presentation, but the work behind putting together the interim report and to appreciate the the um uh the support and guidance from our CDE advisors, while we didn't ask for it, I think originally, it's been very beneficial. Um, so just want to share, uh, having heard the discussion, um, and I want to talk about where we're going. So we already have on the schedule a February, um, actually, what day? Let me just make sure of the the date, February um seventh uh budget workshop. This will be our second budget uh workshop training. The first one was last week and it it focused more on um how to how to go about budgeting in light of newly our newly adopted vision values, goals and guardrails. This second workshop is going to be much more focused on our budget and on what we learned from the state around the governor's budget proposal. Um, so I think in planning that, uh, we already uh have some areas that we know we need to uh discuss, like how we're aligning our uh our our plan and process to begin aligning our budget to our goals. Um, what we're doing to address deficit spending. Um, so I'll also add on the question of how we're um using restricted funds and uh that will provide a forum for a deeper explanation of that as well as an update on uh where we are with the FICMAT recommendations as well as CDE um guidance we've received uh too. So um that will come in February. I do want to uh to share um, you know, uh uh to um Elliot's point, we are deficit spending and it to to some extent it's intentional in that we do have the a large fund balance and we did have obligations to our employees um and to do right by them that we wanted to make sure we were meeting. Uh, what the fund balance does is gives us, um, you know, uh, gives us some time to be thoughtful about how we uh uh eliminate our deficit spending, but that is something we will need to do. And so that will be definitely be a focus of the conversation of how uh the near-term steps and then the long-term steps we need to take to uh uh eliminate the deficit spending. And so uh that's what we can start to look for. And 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 so that's not all going to be answered on February 7th. So that's our next uh in-depth budget conversation, but it's going to be a multi-year process to really get on the the uh, you know, to have a, you know, a balanced budget without deficit spending and kind of right-size, um, you know, uh, our our organization and and making sure most importantly, that our resources are supporting um uh how we're addressing our goals for student learning. So that's what we can look forward to in the next uh, is it February feels like a long time, but it'll be right around the corner and then um we'll have, uh, then we'll go through our budget process and bring forward our budget in in June.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Like to call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogut, or Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomany?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lamb?
Yes.
Six sides.
Thank you. Action item number two, twenty-two, twelve, one, three, SP one, annual five-year report relating to the collection expenditure of developer fees. Superintendent?
Um, thank you. This is a required report um on fees we receive that we are able to use to support our schools. Uh, so I'll turn it over to our head of facilities, uh, Ms. Common Alathen.
Good evening, Commissioners. This will be a very brief item. Our recommended action tonight is that the board review and adopt the attached developer impact fee annual and five-year reports for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Um, this is an annual requirement. Developer impact fees are collected annually. In 2022, we collected about ten million dollars um and spent about six million dollars. I'm rounding. Uh, the impact fees are constrained quite narrowly in terms of potential expenditures and they have to be expended um for projects associated with the growth or demographic um expansion of our student body. And so most commonly used for smaller projects around things like portables when schools expand beyond their existing footprint, and then also projects like Mission Bay, um, potential school of Treasure Island. Um, again, buildings enhancements that are being done to deal with the expansion of growth. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, actually, now I'm gonna go to public comment before we open up for discussion.
There's no in-person public comment for this item. Please raise your hand if you care to uh share your comment for this item. Can we please have, each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
If you want to participate in this project, you can raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no hands raised for this item.
Thank you. Commissioners, Vice President Bogus, if you had a comment? Cause Commissioner Shu? Um, you mentioned that um there's a uh, we collected about ten million and spent about five uh, six million. The remainder of that, is that just sitting there for one? We do have um needs that fit the restrictions, so um, I forgot, do we have accumulated? How much have we accumulated?
We do. We have about um twenty million dollars in accumulated fund balance right now.
And that's part of the budget of the restricted funds? That we we just, is that?
Uh, it's not an operating funding stream. It is for capital expenditures only, so.
I think that it's a um, it might be a whole, it's, I don't, uh, I think that's outside of our general fund.
Yes.
Right, so I don't think it's in that. But that is an example of a restricted fund.
Yeah.
That um, you know, can only be used for certain purposes, but it's outside of our general fund. And I think, so then this would, these funded, these funds then, um, and when will they be accessed? Or I think that's what Commissioner Shu is.
Yeah, absolutely. We intend to use some of these funds to offset costs associated with Mission Bay and the construction of that building to limit the impact to the bond program. Um, we also have upcoming, as we contemplate expansions of facilities to support the student assignment policy potentially, or the realignment of our portfolio, that is also an appropriate use of those funds and um as we're completing our southeast facility planning, that will also drive projects that I think will benefit from this funding. And we do have our former Treasure Island campus, which was um we closed in the early two thousands, but we do now have an option to take um at Treasure Island back if we need it for instructional purposes. And while we have about five million dollars that's owed us for the development of that facility, should we pursue it? Um, this developer impact fees is also exactly the type of funding source we would use to complete any kind of ups upgrades or renovations needed to make that site um useful for us of U S D.
And then I think there's a ultimately, you know, you shared, uh, I think a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, our facilities assessment that will lay the foundation for our facilities master plan, which we know, we saw the assessment, there's multi-billion dollar needs that we're not going to have all the funding for, but that's where then we start to lay out the different projects. These funds um can contribute to the, well, overall will be a part of our facilities master plan strategy, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And right now you're hearing projects that we know are in play, but uh, again, once we have the context of a full facilities master plan, it will be, uh, that that will be part of, uh, you know, will help support the the projects for that.
I I have a follow-up to that. So if this is not part of the general budget that we just saw in the last presentation, it's not part of the bond funds. This is a separate bucket. How many other separate buckets do we have?
Well, Commissioner, I would just speak to for capital funding. There are basically only four major funding sources for the capital program. There's the general obligation bond program, developer impact fees. We have a Mellow Roos, which is an annual, you know, tax that we're collecting from residences for a school life safety tax that yields around, you know, seven million dollars a year. And then we have the deferred maintenance fund, which is a three percent set aside of the overall general fund. Um, and that does provide some funding for capital, although most of that funding does show up in the operating budget, um, particularly for custodial services uh salaries.
That's it? We don't have any other buckets somewhere else?
I've got a few other random odds and ends that are probably not worth detailing at this time.
Capital, you're talking about.
Those are the major, those are our major funding sources for the capital program.
And then we have the general budget. Is that it?
Yeah, so the, so that we have the general fund, which is restricted and unrestricted, but then outside of that, there are other um, you know, there are other funds that fall outside general ed. So for example, like early education is a different, is a whole different fund um that uh that's, you know, not the, that's not part of the general fund. So there's usually there's early ed, there's facilities, um, you got the cafeteria fund uh for food service, for student nutrition services. So these are different, different funds.
Commissioner Matomany?
Okay. Um, thank you for the update. I I um I know we're doing the facilities master plan, but I also am just curious, as we look at these different funds, including this one, when we have compliance issues, like ADA compliance issues that are that are um being flagged as immediate need or even public safety issues, recognizing that we want to have funds available for buffering much larger projects, how um I think, I mean, I I know this is a larger discussion and I know I ask you about this regularly, but I, you know, when I see funding and I know that there are compliance issues and um family requests for projects, I I I'd like to understand how that all is coming together.
Commissioner, safety prop, safety related, let me step back there for a minute. Um, one, the amount of capital funding we have for those kinds of issues that come up, whether they're compliance related or again, just community driven to improve functionality of the site is very narrow. So again, it comes down to seven million dollars a year? Maybe? And then a portion of that is again being used for buildings and ground salaries out of the Mellow Roos. So like last year, we managed to cobble together five million dollars a year. The bond is paying for the overwhelming majority of capital projects that we're moving forward and it's largely tied up in the modernization program and then SNS and DOT. So that is the challenge, is that we have a very small So that is the challenge is that we have a very small amount of money available for us to like respond to emerging issues. That being said, I have worked with my team to outline a set of priorities this year, very much focusing on school site security. So Columbine locks first, and this was also using a blend of bond dollars allocated in October twenty twenty-one, right? The eleven million dollars for school side security, that is not sufficient to cover everything we need. So we're using that. Plus deferred maintenance funding to try and prioritize again, the delivery of Columbine locks. My next priority is PA systems. And we're trying to use that narrow pot of funding, that five million dollars to round out the bond funding. And also respond to other things like water intrusion issues, roofs that are failing, foundations, fencing. But a lot of it goes into a queue. That you see in the facility condition assessment that years and years of that queue building. Were result in deferred maintenance and the facility condition assessment is capturing that some sites are really struggling under the burden of the deferred maintenance that's accumulated.
And just one clarification, is ADA included in that in the facilities assessment? ADA compliance and?
The district has what's called a transition plan. That again, as a result of the Lopez settlement, we have very documented, clearly documented objectives about what we're supposed to accomplish for ADA. When we do get ADA complaints, we have a specific project manager in the facilities design construction team who responds to them. They are funded and pushed to the top of the, to the line. So when I have seen ADA complaints, they have been funded and addressed.
Thank you. I realized I didn't open up with a motion in a second, so. Go ahead.
And then also I appreciate the questions. Just want to make a note, when, when there's like immediate emergency needs, we're going to respond and do what it takes to. Uh, address them. And then just going back, because I saw, uh, just going back to your question, as I saw Commissioner Shu, you still looking. So I just checked. Those other funds are in the interim reports. We have a, um, so in the first interim that we just submitted, all the other funds are in there as well. We just don't highlight them because we're not, that's not part of the certification. When we come forward with the positive, qualified or negative, that's based on really just based on our unrestricted funding. But we look at our overall general fund because the, they are a lot of related expenditures, like special education is a restricted fund that's in the general fund. But it's impacts, but there's unrestricted funds that are, you know, transferred to the restricted funding of the general fund. So we present the general fund altogether, but don't focus the presentation on the cafeteria funds or the bond funds or those other, but they are in the interim report. So move. Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lam?
Yes.
Six sides.
Thank you. All right. Third time's a charm. So action item number three, twenty-two, twelve, one, three, SP three. Emergency declaration and delegation to superintendent to intern contracts for emergency. Excavation removal of contaminated soils and replacement with clean soil at Buena Vista Horace Mann School. Like to ask for a motion in a second.
So move. Second.
Dr. Wayne.
Yeah, and there, I, I just, before discussion and any public comment, I want to give Ms. Commonalotan an opportunity to explain. So why are we bringing this forward? What does this accomplish? Because we know we have an emergency, but why, why bring this forward?
Thank you, Superintendent. This authorization allows us to bypass typical bidding and procurement procedures to select a contractor, which would normally take upwards of thirty days. Given that it is our intention to try to restore access and productive use of the interior courtyard at BVHM for students and staff as soon as possible. Winter break is the best time to do that work most efficiently and with least impact to the student community. I'm sorry, to the school community. Our progress is somewhat dependent on weather, but if we can get the stretch that we need. We do think we can move forward and get this work done so that we can restore use as early as possible in January. Well, happy to keep you apprised of our progress over the winter break. But we, we did want to take this step to be as aggressive as possible.
Thank you for that background. Like to open for public comment.
There's no in-person public comment for this item. For our virtual participants, please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment on this item. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? I do see speakers, again, we'll call these speakers in groups. So Ms. Marshall. Chris Claus and Bernice Cassie. Again, Ms. Marshall, Chris Claus, and Bernice Cassie.
Uh, thank you. I just echo what you shared with us. We appreciate, I want to have the public appreciates hearing that. You're going to expedite this matter because our children's safety is most, is most important. And just keep in mind with our little child said to us earlier that they, they love the garden. So we, so we appreciate your expedite this matter and hopefully can be done during overwinter break and test it before the children could come back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Claus?
Hi, Chris, a special education teacher at Washington High School. I really am glad that you are moving swiftly on this. The safety of the students, staff and community members that use the facilities at Buena Vista Horace Mann are of the utmost importance. I am hoping that as you continue to work on this for this specific school site, you consider other school sites that may also be impacted by similar problems. And consider ways to confirm that all school sites in the district, especially those in the areas of our city that are often the most underserved. Also get tested before this becomes another problem at another site that gets released into the news media. And you cause all of the trauma to families. Be proactive. Test in advance. Test now. Start a new contract maybe for people to bid on to test all school sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernice?
Hello, my name is Bernice Casey. I want to remind the superintendent and the board members that our school is also a homeless shelter. So the shelter is right by the garden area. And the children of the shelter have been utilizing the garden in the past. I also, when I read the. Motion, you're not talking about the other dirt that surrounds the school. And so it sounds like it would be a waste of limited resources. If you're going to remove the soil, you should be. Ensuring that all soil at Buena Vista, the one, the soil along Valencia, twenty-third and Bartlett. Are also tested and if necessary, removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vivette?
Um, I have two quick comments. One is that since we've had issues with previous contractors in this district submitting inaccurate reports. About remediation or other types of reports, wanting to know what type of oversight is going to be built into this contract to ensure that the work is being done. And especially since it's going to be a no-bid contract, that it's not going to be shoddy work. And then number two, um, also in agreement with other speakers who have spoken earlier about the importance of you guys doing this testing at other sites. As well as one of the issues that I've been hearing at Buena Vista Horace Mann is not just the soil, but also the water.
Thank you. And we have one more, Em.
Hi, this is Em again. I am the co-Vice Chair of the Parent Advisory Council. And I just wanted to remind you all that earlier this year, the Parent Advisor Council, in one of our reports, month reports that we gave to you. We supported the BVHM's modernization efforts. And so I just want to really uplift that work. And then as an individual, I just really want to say that not only supporting BVHM. But I think about what happened if BVHM wasn't getting modernized, you wouldn't have tested the soil. So that makes me think about all the other school sites in our district. And I always think about how often is the soil tested? How often is the water tested at every school? I would love to know the answer to that question. And if that's like every four years, that's too off, that's not enough often. We need to test all the water at every school right now. Is there lead? Like where else? And the only reason why we're even doing this test is because people have been requesting for about modernization. So really think about all the school sites. And again, I also agree with the public commenter who talked about the soil outside of the school too, that's still in the school property. Think about that soil as well. Thank you so much and thank you for doing this resolution.
Thank you. So that's conclude virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for comments and questions from commissioners. But first I wanted to just acknowledge how concerning, extremely concerning. The situation is at BVHM. And I wanted to also ask the question around, the item tonight is around for. The emergency excavation removal, removal of those contaminated soils. And how is that connected at BVHM with the contaminated soil and what we are findings are in the water?
Commissioner, thank you for asking that question because I do think it's one that folks are asking who have exposure to this issue. And when you aren't involved in kind of routine construction, but the, the, at the BVHM community meeting, actually, we had our industrial hygienist consultants, Millennium present. And they themselves described the fact that the types of lead contamination that you see in soil is largely the result of widespread environment. Environmental contamination due to like leaded gasoline and other products that were widely available and in use up until the early nineties, right? And so that that becomes ground into the air and it ends up into the soil. The type of typically. In, in, or I should say, in San Francisco, I'm not saying typically, in San Francisco, we are lucky that we have the Hatch Hatch Recipro and the SFPUC. And so that we don't have to worry like many other communities across the United States about that the source of our water is inherently contaminated. When you get a water quality result around lead, it is more likely that the water, as it is leaving the water distribution system and entering the building. Is now being lead is leaching into the water in some way. And so then there's two other questions you ask yourself is, is it coming from the pipes? Or is it coming from the faucet, the fixture itself and the immediate plumbing associated with the. You know, the point of distribution, like that particular sink. Or water faucet. It is a common result that we have now seen, not just in twenty eighteen, when we did our last round of comprehensive K through twelve water quality testing. But even this summer, when we were doing our early education sites, we have been testing water quality all summer. At early education sites to comply with the new state law. And when we've done that, we have, is very common to have results where as you do all the fixtures at a particular site, some of them come back with lead. Detected. The protocol then is to take the faucet offline. And either in twenty eighteen, the protocol was to flush the line, retest. Now it's just to replace it with a new fixture. And then you go through a flushing protocol to make sure the line is clear. And it's not just that there's been sediment collecting from an underused, you know, faucet for a long time. And then you retest. If it comes back clear, you have remediated the situation. And so when we see results where you see, again, some fixtures coming back clean, others coming back with. A result that's above five parts per billion or fifteen parts per billion, that also really seems to strongly indicate that it's the fixtures themselves. Which are made out of alloy metals, which often have lead as a component in the metal itself as it corrodes. Or in the way that the metal is, you know, soldered together, that eventually that deteriorates and gets into the water. So really different stories about how the same element can end up in water versus soil.
Thank, thank you for sharing that. If I could add on just a few thoughts, I mean, first. Just, you know, I think we need to say, we need to acknowledge, again, from a parent perspective, if you hear there's lead at the school and the soil or the water. Like, that's very concerning and all you want to know is we're on it and getting rid of it. Secondly, I appreciate the explanation here and, you know, I think you want to, want to be clear. In our efforts to what I, to rebuild trust, I said we need to be visible, responsive, transparent and, and, you know, hold ourselves accountable. And I think in an effort to be responsive and responsive and transparent, we also need to be clear in our communication. And so already we heard comments tonight that there seem to be mixed messages. And so can you, we did have, in an, in an effort to move quickly on the testing, we had two different testers come in, right? And one tester did not find concerns around some particular issues and another tester did find concern. He spoke a little to that as well. But I think we need to, we, again, we need to be precise in what we're sharing, not to minimize, because that's what it comes across as a place. So well, there's the, but to be, so parents and families and staff have the most accurate information to, on what's happening.
Absolutely. So there were. Two types of tests being done. So we did ask our industrial hygienist contractor, Millennium. To complete again, water quality tests that were focused on the presence of lead in the water. But we also asked a different part of the SFPUC. That doesn't, that doesn't work on lead testing, but is focused on the presence basically of bacteria, E. coli. And also other chemicals in water. And so they were two different testing protocols that were run. And I believe the SFPUC responded saying, we checked it and it's okay on that chemical and bio bacterial screen. But so we did have those two separate tests being run at the same time. We are also having, again, the SFPUC come back this weekend to complete the water quality testing focused on the presence of lead. And that is again, a separate team and there is a very specific protocol that we need to follow. And so because of that, we have to schedule it for a Saturday.
Vice President Bogus?
Could you talk a little bit about what is the process to get? Water fountains tested at school sites, whether or not we have like the internal capability to do that or if there's a third party group? And then the second question I have is. At what level of confidence are we that there aren't similar issues at other schools across the district? And just kind of like, what kind of reassurance can we give to families who are concerned or kind of worried that they might have a similar issue that hasn't been. Identified yet at their school?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I think this is a good example of how heavily we rely on partnerships with the city and county of San Francisco. And I really do want to acknowledge the SFPUC have just been awesome partners to us since twenty eighteen. And Karen Sullivan, who's our executive director of facility and capital planning, has been in regular touch with the SFPUC. During the pandemic, there was a request to maybe pursue a round of testing and that was derailed for a number of reasons. But the PUC at that time was very open to initiating a second round of the tests we did in twenty eighteen and updating the test results. The pandemic kind of. Foreclosed that option. And then now where we're, we find ourselves is that the state law is about to change again. And so the SFPUC would like us to wait until twenty twenty-four to partner with them to do a full round of testing so that we can be in compliance, whatever the law says. What the right threshold is to test and the protocol. The district could pursue. Our own round of testing, but it would be based on earlier standards that we know are about to change, right? So we'd have to talk about it and it is, it is a very labor intensive, resource intensive process. But we have a new state law that has come into effect that has set a very specific standard for early education sites. And that's what we've been doing this summer. So the standard we were working with in twenty eighteen was fifteen parts per billion. As our threshold, and that was for K through twelve sites. A separate law has come out that's has said for early education sites, you need to have a standard of five parts per billion and you need to do this testing. So we started that in compliance with the law to Commissioner Matomani's point. When the law shifts, we mobilize the resources and we, um, tested over thirty-nine sites, um, from the summer through the early fall, including early, um, sites that were co-located with elementary schools. As we got those results, um, there were a number of results that came back again, higher than the threshold. Um, in this case, five parts per billion, so lower. Um, but we have complied with that mandate and we have, um, shut down those faucets, replaced the fixtures, you know, flushed and tested. Um, and, um, I believe so far have made sufficient progress on remediating any issue that has come up, um, as we've had it. So we have been doing testing quite recently across the district. And I'm just sorry, I'm looking for my number of like, I think out of two hundred and eighty-four tests, it was something like twelve percent of them came back with a test that's higher than five parts per billion. Um, again, our recommended procedures and protocols from the SFPUC, um, as we understand them or to, we have adhered to those. Um, and I'm, I apologize, but I do not feel qualified to speak in any great deal, detail about how to translate that standard into specific, you know, health outcomes. But we are in compliance and we are in conversation with the PUC about how to move as quickly as possible when we have nuclear guidance from the state about how to proceed.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, so at this time, um, I like to call for roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
The Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lam?
Yes.
Six eyes.
We are overdue, but I want to ask for a motion to extend beyond ten o'clock, please.
So moved? Second.
Do I have general consensus? Yes. And we'll continue to practice. Ten PM, okay? Um, we are now going into, um, agenda item K, Board Members Reports. Oh, my, see, I was getting a little ahead of myself. Um, so I'm going to go back and, um, we are going to consent calendar item H. Is there a motion and a second on the consent calendar?
So moved?
Second.
And public comment, members of the public may comment on any matter on the consent calendar, but members of the public should not be permitted to sever agenda items for a discussion. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
No.
Okay, um, and any items by the board or superintend severed for discussion tonight? Thank you. So roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice, uh, President Lam?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. Consent calendar, retroactive contracts. For, um, retroactive items two, three, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
Again, members of the public may comment on any matter on the retroactive items on the consent calendar, but members of the public shall not be permitted to sever, um, agenda items for discussion. Any items withdrawn or corrected, superintendent?
No.
Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none. Um, roll call vote on retroactive contracts from the
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Which now brings us back to, brings us to Agenda K, Board Members Reports. Uh, reports from board delegates to member organizations. Commissioner Matomadi?
See, oh, see, the, now, see, we've, this is what happens to me after ten. This, there's this, I turn into a pumpkin. So, um, C, CBSA?
CSB.
CSBA, that's, yeah. So we attended a conference, San Diego, um, San Francisco is hosting next year, so, uh, no excuses. But President Lam and myself were able to attend. I was only there for part, part of it. President Lam intended full on, and it was a great opportunity to, um, meet colleagues, um, from other, uh, districts, but also to look at best practices and what folks are doing, especially around LCAP, community engagement, um, budget outlook for the state and so forth. Um, and I also do want to acknowledge that, um, our soon-to-be new Commissioner, Alita Fisher, also was able to join and attend the, um, the new board member meeting and, um, and it was, it, it's great to see the governance practices continuing. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Uh, overall, the student, um, the delegate assembly, um, was an opportunity for CSBA also, um, to hear from their delegates throughout the state around the policy priorities, um, where, um, CSBA will be putting its efforts. So we will forward, uh, to colleagues, um, the, uh, materials from highlights of the both workshops as well as the delegate, delegate assemblies so that you all can, um, see the, the learnings there and happy to also incorporate into our, uh, governance calendar and practices, um, in those highlights. And with that, um, I also, uh, want to acknowledge that tonight is Commissioner Shu's final, um, full board meeting, um, and want to give her an opportunity to share any, um, words, um, before we, uh, close out our evening. Thank you, President Lam. As this is my last official board meeting, I'd like to say that it has been an honor for me to serve, um, this Board of Education. I have learned a great deal about SFUSD. At times horrified by what I learned and at other times delighted. I have enjoyed working with you all. And I'm proud to have accomplished a whole lot in the past several months together. Namely, we hired our new super superintendent, Dr. Wayne. We passed a balanced budget with virtually no layoffs. We restored criteria-based admissions to Lowell High School. We did drop the Washington Merrill lawsuit and saved our district a, at least a half a million dollars or more. And most recently and importantly, we set five-year goals and guardrails for our district. I am also proud to have personally led the effort from a board's members position and saved JRLTC at Balboa Mission and Galileo High Schools. I'm proud to have represented the immigrant community, not just by being an immigrant on the board, but also championing the values of hard work and academic excellence, which the immigrant community really values and which is also shared by many, many others in our broader San Francisco community. I'm also proud to have brought common sense and business and management experience to the board so that we can have a more well-run organization that serves our customers, who are students, families, and educators. I do also want to address the elephant in the room, which is that while unintentional, I provided some excitement and drama to this board over the summer. My answers to a campaign questionnaire caused an uproar in parts of our community. It is unfortunate that some people chose to focus solely on the political incorrectness of the first part of my answer, which I apologized for, rather than on the point of my entire statement, which is that parent involvement is critical to the success of children in school and in life. And if some parents are unable to provide the support that their students need, whether due to historical and systemic inequities, culture, or life circumstances, then our schools and our city need to step in and help support those students and families. I have gone into communities in our southeast neighborhoods and spoke with many people since the summer. Many agreed with me on the problem and provided me with more context, which I very much appreciated. And that strengthened my belief that being politically correct and dancing around the problem without naming it and addressing it head-on would only perpetuate the problem and hurt our students more. On a similar note, I don't agree with the statement that it is solely the schools or teachers' responsibility to educate our students. In addition to parents having responsibilities, students themselves have responsibility to put in the work of learning. Just like if you want to succeed in the arts or athletics or anything, you have to put in the work to do well in school. And that is what agency means, to take it upon yourself to learn and not just expect to be taught. And lastly, I believe our teachers need to ask and expect more from students, not always baby them and make things easier. When you expect more, most students can and will rise to the challenge and surprise and delight everyone, including themselves. And that will help us close the achievement gap and bring true equity to all of our students. And I hope we can have honest dialogue about these topics in the future. Without resorting to name-calling. Anyway, there's a lot of work yet to be done to turn SFUSD into a world-class public education system that our world-class city deserves. And I implore, as well as challenge you to continue down the path of focusing on student outcomes and working with the superintendent to achieve those outcomes. And even though I would not be sitting next to you on this dais, I will still be working towards the same goals alongside you. I wish you all the best in your role as commissioners. The students of San Francisco are counting on you. I and many others will be watching and holding you accountable. And next election is just two years away. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Shu, for your service. I know it has not been easy, um, for when one lands into the seat of serving on this dais and serving on behalf of all of our students, um, and this school district. So I want to thank you for your commitment, um, to this district and appreciate your service. And with that, wanted to say big thank you. At this time, like to see if there's any announcements from other members. Okay, so we are going to formally adjourn at ten twenty-three. Thank you.